Okay, welcome. Let's start the meeting November 12th. Can I have the role?
Councilmember Evans.
Present.
Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here.
Mayor Millman.
Here.
Councilmember Bess Campbell.
Present.
Councilmember Arndt.
Here.
And Councilmember Taylor.
Here.
Thank you. Can we stand for the flag slip?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm moved to accept the agenda in order and content.
Second.
A motion of second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Tonight, we have a special presentation from Evergreen Health, and I believe Dr. Palazzo is going to be giving that. Welcome. I don't, is it on?
Check.
There we go.
All right. Well, good evening. It's good to be with you, Mayor Millman, council members. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight. I'm Dr. Tori Palazzo, the Chief Executive Officer of Evergreen Health. I'm new to this role as of 10 months ago, but not new to the organization. I've been practicing, taking care of patients, serving in various leadership roles, and living in the community for over two decades. And it is an honor to serve as a superintendent and the CEO of our community hospital. Tonight is a special opportunity for us to share what's going on at Evergreen. The title is a little daunting, a state of health care. We could take hours doing that, but I know we only have a few minutes. So we'll be sharing what's going on at Evergreen, a little bit about the landscape around us, and what's to come for Evergreen. If we can move to the next slide. Along with my thanks, I extend the thanks of our entire Evergreen Health Commissioner Board, one of whom is with us tonight, Commissioner Stewart, who represents the Bothell-Duval-Woodenville area. And also a thank you to one of our former commissioners who's here as a council member. And the support that we've received from our elected officials that do serve in this community role can't be overstated. And like you all, they are here to serve the community and to understand how we can serve our patients, our community, and provide health care in a way that they asked for 52 years ago when we started. So if we move to the next slide, these words are not just that. 20 years ago, when I came to Evergreen to practice, I looked at many hospitals that had mission statements, visions, values, and they all look very similar. And it's one thing to have them on a website or on a page. It's another to see it in practice and know that the mission is being accomplished. And I can say with good authority from my vantage point, after probably the most challenging time in the history of Evergreen Health through the pandemic, and now some of those challenging financial times, that we are staying true to this mission and to what I think the community here in Woodenville and the entire district asked for 52 years ago when they said, "We would like to have health care local." And not just any health care, but some of the highest quality health care that's out there. And that is what we, I think, are delivering. And we'll share a little bit more about that in a moment. Next slide, please. So this just gives some statistics on what's happening here at Evergreen from humble beginnings of a hospital of 74 beds, quadrupling our size now in 2024 with 354 hospital beds. We start at the beginning of life, 4,500 babies delivered. That's the second most in the entire state of Washington, to the end of life with hospice care and palliative care, which is some of the few remaining in the way that we deliver it right here in the state, and everything in between. When we're talking about inpatient care, what we provide for our community in the outpatient realm. And then when we leave the walls of the hospital and the brick and mortar, our home care services to help patients be able to stay where they want to be when there's still acute illness and challenges going on, to be able to serve them in their homes with our home care division, truly one of the biggest in the Puget Sound area. We know we can't do it alone. And the bottom part of this slide talks about the partnerships that we've developed over the years to bring excellence, including the Fred Hutch Cancer Center, some of the best cancer services in the world on campus at Evergreen. We've partnered with folks around us, in particular Overlake, through the Eastside Health Alliance, in providing services in cardiac and neurosciences and finding other ways to make sure that we can deliver to the patients and deliver on that commitment of care local. I have a personal experience where early on, when I started at Evergreen, my wife needed services that couldn't be provided at Evergreen. And now we can do that. And this is one of those scenarios where when you need your loved one to be close and the support that comes with it, and knowing that you can get that care right in your backyard, that is paramount. Next slide, please. So this is a district map, just to remind you that we are a district. The green color is the Evergreen Kirkland District, King County Public Hospital District Number Two, includes Kirkland, Kenmore, Bothell, Woodenville, Duval, Redmond, and Sumamish. We have partnered with Evergreen Health Monroe, which is another public hospital district in Snohomish County. They're Snohomish County Public Hospital District Number One. They are marked out in the teal color. And although geographically much bigger than our district, from a population standpoint, smaller, together, we serve about a million individuals in that North King County, South Snohomish County area. Next slide, please. Woodenville has always been an important part of our history. And having primary care services here in Woodenville, urgent care services, and then connecting with the community is part of our goal. And you can see on the second bullet point, some of the funding that has been specific to events and community organizations right here in Woodenville. We'll talk about the community benefit that goes to the whole district in just a moment. And we're proud members of the Woodenville Chamber as well. Next slide, please. All right, the title of this slide may be the most important of anything I present tonight. So we are here for one reason. And I get to serve on the board at the Washington State Hospital Association. I have seen the challenges around us in delivering health care through a pandemic and dealing with the challenges of the after effects. And sometimes it's easy to start getting off track and to remember why we're here. And we exist, Evergreen Health, for one simple purpose, to take care of patients, to take care of our community. And we will never forget that, even though these challenges and dynamics around us continue to make, I think, that mission challenging sometimes. Like a water district, a fire district, we are a municipality. We're a junior taxing district. That was part of that commitment and investment from the community. We do receive a general levy fund that we are eternally grateful for. It allows us to do some things that a typical hospital can't do or wouldn't be able to do because of the financial challenges that come with some of the margins that are reality for us in health care. If we move to the next slide, we'll talk a little bit in a moment on what those tax dollars do. But as a reminder of what this looks like, if you're a homeowner, a taxpayer, the public hospital district, and this is specific to Woodenville, represents about 1.7% of your tax bill. And you can get a sense of how other things fall in that. For public hospital districts in the state, of which there are 38 that have general levies, this is the smallest levy of any public hospital district. Currently, 14 cents on $1,000 assessed tax value. It's a small portion of our revenue, less than 2%, but a very important part, and I'll explain why in a moment. Next slide, please. So before we get to what we're doing with some of those dollars that impacts Woodenville and our communities, you know, we think that a public hospital district model, even though it's 52 years in the making, and back in the day when it started, it was very rural out here relative to where we're at now. And the concept of a public hospital was perhaps more in line with a, you know, more rural area. And so now, in the days of Microsoft and Google and Amazon, does it still make sense to have this public hospital district concept, support from the community? There is no question that as consolidation happens in health care, and we're seeing it all around us. In fact, it was a little hard for us to see our friends down at Overlake. And I do call them friends. We compete with one another, but they provide fantastic health care to the east side. Because of the challenges resulting from a number of factors, including the financial ones, they needed to partner with a multi-care system. They are in the state here. But we do see that as decisions start to be made for a health care system distant from where the work happens, things do evolve in a different way. I'm not saying it's right or wrong, good or bad. It just is different. So as a public hospital district with local commissioners that are committed to the community, where decisions are made, decisions to grow, to invest, are based on what the community needs and not based on a corporate decision. I think that's important. The voice of us matters. I live here, I live in the community. And knowing that the people that make decisions and govern this hospital are beholden to the community members that receive that health care is a special thing. And then reinvesting in the community in a way that we wouldn't otherwise be able to do because of those levy funds, I think, is key. The next slide speaks to that a bit, if I remember my slide numbers correctly. If we can advance one more. So I should make this a bigger font, but $6.4 million in levy funds are reinvested into the community. That represents 30% of the levy funds that come in. The remaining 70% actually goes to help with debt service and to fund our facilities. But the board has committed, and this is very unique as a public hospital district, to say, "We will commit these funds to reinvesting in the community and not putting it all back into operations." So this is a subset of some of the things that we do invest in. Some of these are internal to the organization, to fund items that normally would not be able to exist or be paid for on their own. Others are external. And we talk about youth mental health, supporting our seniors in the community, senior centers. End-of-life care is important. Palliative care services that are done both internal and external to the organization are key. And we think important investments to continue in. And that commitment will continue. Next slide, please. So additional things that we feel are very important for us. We need to hear from our community. So a community advisors program is an important part of our program, where we get to hear on how we're doing. And this isn't looking for a cheerleading squad. We're looking for people to give us true feedback so we can improve. And every piece of feedback that we get is a gift that helps us move the needle in a favorable direction. Our volunteers are in the community, sorry, our employees are in the community volunteering. That's an important part, and we focus on that. We focus on community sponsorships, as listed there. And relationships matter. Our community organizations that are connected with what it means to be at Woodenville, Kirkland, any of these cities in the district, we need to understand what our role is to work with them so we can help with their goals and missions, so we can accomplish ours as well. Next slide. Okay, so one of our core values is excellence. And I'm here to tell you and maybe give the council a little bit of a quiz tonight. What you're seeing before you is a list of all the awards and acknowledgements and rankings that are publicly reported, risk-adjusted, that every hospital in the country, some 5,000, are beholden to. And you can see that one of the agencies that rate us on outcomes is health grades. And we are in the top 50 hospital list of all hospitals in the country. It puts us in the 1%. There's a number of other things on here, the green badge, leapfrog. We get a letter grade, just like back in grade school. And no one wants to bring back to your parents or your commissioners a grade of F. Some hospitals do bring that back because of the outcome scores. We have been an A-graded hospital for six years in a row. Medicare also rates us on a star rating. The very first hospital to rate it five stars in the state, and we've maintained that ever since. So here's my question to the council. How many hospitals of the 5,000 in the country have achieved this level on each of these metrics? What's your guess? 100? 50?
25.
You're close, 15. So there are 15 hospitals in the country that have achieved this right now. And the only one in the state of Washington is right here in our backyard. And now, why this is so incredibly impactful is that we have some of the most fantastic health care in the entire country, right here in the Puget Sound. And then to be ranked this way, and this isn't to say, "Well, what about the University of Washington? I train there, I work there, they are fantastic." But they take care of a subset of patients that is more complicated. So for what we do from a community hospital standpoint, and they're graded as well, this is a pretty fantastic place. And the most important part of this slide, if I were to take this down, walk into the emergency room tonight at Evergreen, up to the ICU, or anywhere where care is being provided, that staff would say, "Dr. Palazzo, that looks fantastic, but we can do it better than that." And that's how we got here in the first place. It's not about the awards or badges. It's about the next day, doing it better than the day before, because there's always opportunity to improve. I know I'm coming to the end of my time. I think I have just maybe one or two more slides, if we can advance one more. So the reality in health care is that the finances were completely turned upside down with the pandemic. And you might ask yourself, "How can that be when hospitals are full of patients that have COVID?" And we heard about that, right? You must be making a lot of money. And the answer is, no. The way health care economics work and how reimbursement happens, we do not get paid well to take care of patients with medical issues. That doesn't matter to us. We are here to take care of everyone, and we work on the backend to figure the finances out. But the reality is, in Washington State and elsewhere, the losses in the last two years were staggering. Evergreen Health, which actually fared quite well, lost $160 million in 2021 and 2022. The good news is through lots of effort, as well as renegotiation with insurance companies to get paid fairly for the type of work that we're doing, knowing that inflationary pressures continue to increase. But we were with contracts that were three years old. And it was time to renegotiate and adjust those, both for inflationary pressures and to make sure that we were paid fairly for the quality. And as a result of that, 2025, there is a lot of black on the profit and loss statement. Every cent we make gets reinvested into the community. We're working out of a pretty big hole, but some of the hospitals were not able to do what Evergreen has done. And that's why additional partnerships and consolidation is happening. We are trying to avoid that. And we're going to do everything possible to remain independent and stay true to the ask 52 years ago of our community. I think the final slide says it all. I love this one, 1972. Imagine a pasture and a decision to put a hospital in the middle of that. And that's where we started with 74 beds. It's humbling to see where we're at. And it'll be interesting, you know, 50 years from now, to look back and say, you know, what were we then? There's more to do, there always will be. We are focusing on levers that we have, along with some of the tools we talked about, the levy we discussed. Our commissioners have moved forward with putting a levy lid lift ballot for next August on the ballot to help secure some of that maintenance and operation to stabilize us as we continue to improve through operations after the challenging last two years. So there will be more to come to talk about that. We know that is an important ask. But in the meantime, a tool that we have to be able to keep some of what we hold dear and what we feel is important with local decision-making, continue to invest in excellence, and importantly, invest in increasing access for our growing community, will help us accomplish that. So with that, council, I will go ahead and yield my time, but happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Palazzo. Councilmember Evans.
So I don't have any questions, but I did want to share some feedback with you. In June of 2023, I was diagnosed with cancer. And the doctors, the entire care team at Evergreen were incredible. And as I've been on that journey, I've met so many other people who did not have that same level of care, compassion, slowing down, like being in the moment and not rushing. It is really incredible. And I hope none of you ever have to go through this, but the radiation center in Evergreen that you have to go to, you feel really awful when you're going to it. And they have turned it into a spa-like setting. So every day, I could go in there, I could sit, I could listen to the water going, I could relax. And I saw other people in similar things. And I just want to say thank you. It takes a lot to bring that level of care and compassion to the community. And I don't know that people know how incredibly lucky we are to have Evergreen.
If I could respond, Councilmember Evans, first off, thank you for your trust in us. And I shared with you a personal experience of why this place is important to me. And it's very similar with a level one of mine who went through and spent time in the same places that you did. And that's why this is so dear to me personally. It is a reason why it's not a great time to be a CEO in a health care organization. It was not my plan when I went to medical school. I would not do this anywhere else. This is the honor of a lifetime to try and preserve what you just described. Thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, just a quick statement. I remember when you were hired 10 months ago, I stood up and said, "There's not a single person on the planet who's more qualified to lead the organization due to your decades serving our community and knowing the community that you serve. And seeing what you've done in this little time has been amazing. Turning around that budget and is really making that impact." So I just want to say thank you for everything you do and your team. It's been amazing.
Thank you, Councilmember Edwards. I do remember that moment that you said those words and the pressure at the moment to try and make this all work. And it's great 10 months later to see where we're at, and we are far from being done. Thank you.
I want to add, we, I, the Millman family, and our neighbors, we really appreciate the regional hospital. I had two kids born at Evergreen Hospital. My wife was treated for breast cancer there. Her treatment was amazing. We value Evergreen Health very much. And if there's anything that we can do to help in your endeavors, please let us, reach out to us and let us know.
We will. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you very much. Let's open up public comments. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, when I call your name, please come up to the microphone, state your name and whether you live in the city limits, and you'll have three minutes. First is Richard Dixon.
I was just going to do the general comments, I'll comment on this topic here.
Okay.
Oh, okay, my bad. I thought this was about Evergreen. My apologies. My name is Richard Dixon. I am a resident of Woodenville, unincorporated Woodenville. I was here for the meeting about the Crystal Lake, what we're calling the Hooven Forest Parcel, DNR Parcel, adjacent to Crystal. It's 183-plus acres of DNR property that Woodenville was given the first right of refusal. It was understandable. Woodenville was not going to be able to acquire the property. Since then, really good news, we have a new lands commissioner, John, excuse me, Dave Up the Grove. And he's going to be visiting us here in Woodenville. He ran on a platform of preserving 18,000 acres of what we would call legacy forest. And that parcel has been timbered at least once, if not twice. It's been in the public trust since 1879, since the state became a state. I have flyers here for anybody in the audience, anybody who is watching via the television here. You can go on Woodenville Neighbors on the Facebook group and Woodenville Neighbors Uncensored. This flyer is posted on both of those. So really, what I'm here today to do today is offer probably Woodenville, one of the greatest things possible, is that we could actually save this forest with no money down, no cost to us, just with a swipe of a pen from Mr. Up the Grove. This would also be a wonderful opportunity for you to, for us all, to meet our lands commissioner. And anything that anybody can do in their capacity. Me, as a private citizen, I've just been running around. There's a trail, it's called the Lushut Seed Whispers Trail, that traverses the entire property. I've been running around with others with these flyers and then also posting up every trailhead, so there's no way to access the trail without somebody knowing about what's going on. So this is an opportunity to not only meet and greet. Also, part of the people, the people that have been invited also to this event are Dave Summers, Megan Dunn, Derek Stanford, Tom Teagan, Sharon Walker, Mr. Ferris, Shelley Kloba, and Davina Duar. My understanding is Sharon or Mr. Ferris may come so far, and Dave Summers is a no for schedule conflict. But this is a great opportunity to meet our, now our commissioner of public lands and to also get involved into preserving this forest. One of the things we're all very well aware of is that there's growth. There's a tremendous amount of growth. And it's really easy to get caught up in that. But it would be really sad if this property went up to our public lands and we started losing the woods in Woodenville. Anyway, anybody who's interested, my phone number is on that sheet. Please reach out to me. Thank you very much for letting me share.
Thank you, Mr. Dixon.
Thanks.
Alex Campbell.
Good evening, I'm Alex Campbell. I do live in the city limits. Tonight, I'm here to talk about two agenda items, actually. 12 is about the engagement subcommittee, seven months of effort to try and figure out how to better talk to people in Woodenville, for various reasons. And item number 13, which is deeply ironic in that it is exactly the opposite. Planning Commission is the most engaged volunteer group of people in the city. Many of them have served in that capacity or some capacity longer than any of you have been on the dais, in some cases, longer than any of you have been in the city. The fact is that they are experts. They've trained themselves, they have access to the staff, they work very closely. And here we are, looking to try and dissuade them from actually giving an opinion. Let me be clear, I was there on October 23rd when they discussed the Main Street DA. Not a single question was out of line. In fact, these are the type of questions about code compliance and whether or not a public benefit was sufficient, that are exactly what was talked about with Harvest, with Green Partners, and with the West Point Development, which Mr. Millman will remember when he was on Planning Commission. The fact is, the only difference that night, from all the three of those examples, there was not a single representative of the actual company, Main Street, in the room. Instead, they were represented that night, maybe very admirably, by the city manager, who argued their side. That's not appropriate. Let me end by saying, if you move forward on any of the options in Agenda Item 13, you're putting a capstone on our proof that the Old Town Rezone, the Main Street DA, really show a disdain for citizen involvement and that you do not wish to have engagement from experts. Thank you.
Allison Farmer.
Hi, I'm Allison Farmer, resident, lived outside the city limits. I'm much with Alex. I'm here to discuss business item 13. And I also think it's ironic that you're going to discuss the involvement at the Planning Commission right after the community engagement plan tonight. While this plan was being put together, I have witnessed members of this council and the city behave appallingly to members of our community over the Old Town Main Street proposal. I still cannot understand the absurd lengths taken to ensure a desired result in the Old Town meetings held here. It was way out of balance with the Main Street request and has caused irreparable damage to the reputation and trust our minority community has of the city. I have seen a breakdown of transparency, truth, integrity, social justice, and democracy, and a continued depressive denial of having done anything wrong. Now we have yet a further Berlin power move. The Planning Commission did nothing wrong. They did their job and recommended you not grant the code amendment in Old Town. But for some unexplained reason, you totally ignored them. The image of the townhome development was inaccurate, misleading, another thing you chose to ignore. So they asked for a more representative drawing to base a decision on. Main Street promised 10% affordable, yet the DA did not have an equitable percentage, so they asked for a fairer allocation. These things are protecting the city, its residents, and our future. They never said no. Main Street walked away after being held accountable for lying and producing a shoddy DA. Instead of trying to eliminate the Planning Commission from any future DA involvement, it should be more constructive and supportive to ask for a citywide affordable mandate to be put on your work agenda. For over 10 years, the Planning Commission has been trying to get affordable in every DA with no one question in the process until now, only to be told there's no policy to make developers do it. Affordability is now a necessity, not a public benefit. The only new DA procedures needed are to tighten up required submission documentation and adopt an affordable mandate so developers know the requirements before presenting a DA. The fact the mayor went straight to adding this discussion item when just one DA did not go the way he and the manager wanted is very worrying and a big red flag, especially with Green Partners and the chateau hovering in the shadows. Now is not the time for checks and balances to be raised by limited community engagement in any way. The Planning Commission were only ones to thoroughly question things, listen to community concerns, and look out for more than just the developer's interest. Their resident volunteers that care about the city. Questioning and curbing their involvement is disrespectful and unfair. Removing them from any DA decisions would be highly undemocratic and irregular. Thank you.
Steve Yabrough.
Good evening, councilmembers. I'm Steve Yabrough. I live here in the city limits and have for about 22 years now. I have been volunteering on various boards and commissions for 18 years, the last 15 on the Planning Commission, mostly as chair or vice chair. Commission members are unpaid citizens who volunteer their time because they care about the city. The Planning Commission looks in detail at land use issues and makes recommendations to the city council, which is the decision-making body. That's you guys. which is the decision-making body, that's you guys. You are free to ignore those recommendations as you did in your recent decision to approve ground floor residential in the Old Town area. But tonight's agenda seems a bit hypocritical to me, let me explain why. Business item number 12 would adopt a community engagement plan indicating that you would like to hear more from Woodinville citizens. That's a good thing. Business item number 13 proposes to remove development agreements from the Planning Commission's purview. These have major impact on where and how the city grows and is of significant concern to our citizens. Here's the hypocrisy. Business item number 12 seeks citizen input. Business item number 13 proposes to muzzle inputs from citizen volunteers on the Planning Commission. Is this because they may make recommendations you don't like? I.e., you really want a rubber stamp? Or do you really want to hear from your citizens, even those who spend time examining the issues for you? What looks like hypocrisy is trying to show you care about citizen input, business item number 12, when perhaps you don't, business item number 13. Which way is it? The decision you make on this will show which way it is. Oh, by the way, for the council member who was shocked that a previous city council had approved a seven-story project in Old Town, the West Point project, recommended by the Planning Commission on August 21st, 2019, the motion which was made by then Planning Commission member Mike Millman and okayed by city council on September 10th, 2019, was five stories, not seven. The height limit there is 57 feet. I checked those numbers with Mr. Grumbach. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Consent calendar.
I move to accept the consent calendar as written.
Second.
Motion is second, in discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries, thank you. That brings us to our first business item, business item number nine. First reading of ordinance number 772, adopting 2024 transportation impact fees and revisions to transportation concurrency requirements. Ms. De Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, good evening, council. This evening, we have a very brief presentation on the transportation impact fees. We've had a few meetings with council, gotten feedback. And so today, we are presenting the first reading of the draft ordinance to potentially impact the transportation impact fees. So pretty high-level presentation, summarizing what's in the staff report and just highlighting some of the main points that were changed in the ordinance. So with that, I will have Kendra Brilin come in with Fair and Peers and just go over highlighting what we have done, where we were, where we are now, and where we are going. So very close to the finish line, hopefully.
Good evening, council, again Kendra Brilin with Fair and Peers, and I promise I will commit to being brief. So very glad to be here tonight, bringing you kind of the first reading of this proposed ordinance for impact fees. So if we can go to the next slide, just wanted to quickly summarize where we've been. It's been a very long process to get where we are tonight. We started the transportation plan in the summer of 2022, which was adopted earlier this year. And we've been, we're here tonight bringing you a draft of the TIF program after several essential touches with city council. And we appreciate all of your time, attention, and expertise throughout this process. So go to the next slide, I just want a quick reminder, just for everyone in council, but also in the audience, that Woodinville has an existing traffic impact fee program today. It's been in place for many, many years. And it's described in Woodinville Municipal Code, Section 3.39. And this next slide here just provides some of the key details about that program. Essentially, it charges to development based on vehicle trip generation to pay for kind of proposed projects on your TIF list. The current fee, as we've shared in previous presentations, charges to all sorts of uses. We've got a few examples here on the screen for a single-family home and for a wine tasting room. Essentially, the program, how it operates today is that it charges new development and it helps fund new projects. Although, as we know, a lot of the projects that are on your list right now are outdated. And with the adoption of the new transportation program, transportation plan, there's a need really to update that program. And so on the next couple of slides, I'm going to just walk through some of the proposed program updates. So first of all, just recalling some of the key feedback that council has provided. And you know, certainly, we've had some pretty substantive conversations both in July and in September. The feedback that we heard from you is one, an interest in increasing TIF revenues to fund capital projects in the transportation plan, while at the same time being mindful of economic growth in local businesses and making sure we're not hindering them. The fee should be set such that it increases over time. We know that our current program, the fee hasn't been raised since 2017, which has really eroded to inflation. So there was an interest not only in raising that fee to make sure we're not losing to inflation, but making sure that we're setting some automatic escalations in your current code such that that's not a problem moving forward. Also, including provisions to make sure that the TIF program is really encouraging affordable middle housing and that it's including exemption process for affordable housing. And so on the next slide, just wanted to walk through ordinance 772. So first of all, updating the impact fee program again to point to that new list of projects in your transportation plan. Because that project list is so multimodal, making sure that we are now assessing based on PM peak hour person trips rather than vehicle trips, really to create that strong nexus with multimodal projects and setting that fee such that it's equivalent to your current TIF rate, but recognizing the inflation that's occurred between 2017 and today. And then setting again that structure such that fees are adjusting automatically on an annual basis to account for inflation, incorporating policies again to encourage construction of middle housing and affordable housing options. And then also modifying your Woodinville Municipal Code, Section 2190060, to reflect best practices and multimodal concurrency. So those are some of the key provisions. We really did want to highlight tonight that ordinance 772 also includes an affordable housing exemption that looks to exempt fees for affordable housing units when they meet the affordable housing requirements that are specified in state law. Those are stated kind of in the second bullet on the slide here. And also making sure that they're achieving key city objectives. So a careful look by city staff to making sure that we're providing those exemptions when they're really housing types that are really advancing your goals. So that's really all I have for tonight, I promise that I would be brief. Happy to answer any questions you have, but really, again, very much appreciate kind of the process and the attention and care you've provided over the last many months.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilmember Best Campbell.
So do you know of any transportation plan that incorporates the requirements of MFTE, particularly around affordable housing, that they have to be of the same quality, location, and mix as the units that are there? So I was looking through our ordinance where 3.39, where we can exempt without triggering state payback, and it would have to exceed either the minimum amount that we require or the minimum on a development agreement. Currently, the city does not have a minimum requirement. So for example, this is more of a thought exercise. If you have a developer who decides they would like to do 10% affordable but don't want to go through MFTE, is there a way that you've ever seen in these transportation plans to incorporate some of that MFTE language in the TIF program in city code? So that no matter how affordability gets built, it's all going to be sort of integrated and not separate as it's built? Am I making any sense here? In my mind, I know what I'm saying, but...
Yes, it's a very technical topic. And so I'll let city staff, if they want to weigh in there. What I would say is that this affordability provision is not required by state law. It's something that cities can elect too. So heard a strong commitment by council in wanting to bring that in. And I've worked with many, many jurisdictions, and they all structure it just a little bit differently. So I'd say probably there's no other jurisdictions that I've encountered that are doing it exactly as Woodinville. But I'd say there are some that are more inclusive and some that are less inclusive, and you guys are probably in the middle of the pack.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
I move to pass the first reading of ordinance number 772, amending transportation impact fees and regulations of Woodinville Municipal Code, Tractor 3.39, and Woodinville Municipal Code 21.90.060 for consistency with the new TIF program as presented.
Second.
The motion is second, in discussion? As the maker of the motion, do you have any thing you'd like to start off with?
I believe when we visited this item initially, we realized that, you know, we definitely want to make sure that we're keeping a goal of making sure that we have affordability and not raising this too high. I believe that what's been presented is something that keeps us raising to keep up with inflation, but does not hurt, I guess, people that would have less of ability to actually pay that tip. So it's in line, I think that it's an adjustment for us, and we'll see how this comes out, and hopefully we'll get the best outcome.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
I'd like to amend the main motion to propose that we add to Section 3.39.050, Subsection 3C, the proposed low-income housing units must fully comply with the terms of Woodinville Municipal Code 3.43.050, Subsection 7, BIIII, requirements A, B, and C, and I can always provide this to the city clerk if necessary. Point A, the mix of units in size, layout, and type will match the overall project. B, the location of units within the project...
Councilmember Best Campbell, are you done with your motion?
I'm continuing to make the motion and defining the terms of what A, B, and C are in the motion, so that the council knows what they're voting on.
That's when, if you get a second on this, that's the part where you actually start advocating.
How do I get someone to second it if we don't know what I'm voting on?
You just made a motion, the content of your motion is made, then you wait for a second, and then you advocate for your motion.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that she has a continuance, but let's let her finish.
Okay, fair enough.
So point A, the mix of units in size, layout, and type will match the overall project. B, the location of units within the project must be intermingled. And C, the quality of construction and finish must match other units in the project.
Right, second? Seeing none, motion fails. I have a second. Now you can...
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order. I don't believe that this is germane to the initial motion. This actually changes away from the original intent for amending the transportation impact fees and gets into actual construction and land use and property. So I'm not sure if these two things can be done together.
This is just the first reading of the ordinance, so I'm going to, point well taken. We're going to have another reading of that and be able to have motions regarding the content. So I'll point well taken. Back to the main motion, any discussion on the main motion? Councilmember Best Campbell.
So can we ask Mr. Ganson if that's indeed what the ruling is? Is this land use, is this not? I had asked if this has been seen in other TIF programs, it has. Is this something we've seen before, is this the appropriate place or not?
Mr. Mayor, did you want me to address that?
That would be great.
So I scrambled to track the proposed amendment to the main motion. It seemed to be an amendment to language in the draft ordinance and I believe in Section 5, revising the terms of WMC 3.39.050. Am I correct on that so far? So if it's proposing an amendment to language that is itself being amended in the draft ordinance, I struggle to see how that is not germane. It seems to be revising the terms of the same language that's in front of council with the main motion.
Okay. Further discussion on the amendment? Councilmember Best Campbell.
So I bring this amendment because I see this as a loophole, that on the one hand, you could say you want to build affordable units and get some sort of benefit in terms of relief on transportation fees, but then creating incredibly small units that are either separate or segregated or much different than the overall units that are being built for that property. And I don't believe in that sort of economic segregation. I think it's important that whatever affordability we build is there, and you don't know that it's there, and that it's incorporated. And I see this as a way of closing the loophole so that whatever affordability we get is the type of affordability Woodinville wants, which is inclusive and completely agnostic of whether or not you can afford to live in this complex or not. Nobody can tell by looking at the units what your affordability level is. So I think this is perfectly in line with all of the other MFTE discussions that we've had, and I see this as a closing of the loophole.
Councilmember Hart.
Thank you. So I am curious about this idea because while I do think we, as a council, need to have some discussions on what affordability looks like in the city and what our codes surrounding that might be. I know when we talk about the MFTE program and the language that the council member quoted in terms of how the units are laid out and included, they are that way only because they are enabled by the tax incentive of the MFTE program. So because they're participating in the MFTE program, the company that is producing those units can then afford to build the units all the same. But what is proposed here would be applying the same criteria to projects that are not benefiting from the tax break. And though we would provide them some breaks on the transportation impact fees, those breaks are not necessarily to the same scale, potentially, as the MFTE program. So I am supportive of the idea of having our affordable units look like all of the units in the complex, but I am cautious about approving this because the unintended consequences of including this with the transportation impact fee might be that we have less affordable units in the city because no one can then hit that economic barrier of building the units to the same quality level as the rest of the construction project. So this is where, I know this affordability is extremely important. We need to be encouraging it, but this is where we have to look at these things so carefully because if you overregulate and don't provide enough of that financial incentive, then you're actually going to stifle the production of the affordable units. So this is one where I would like to get more information on what, how that would pencil out. And I'm not really sure who can provide that because staff, I mean, information on theoretical projects is kind of just guessing, so...
Do we have any input on that?
I appreciate the thought. The thought crossed my mind as we were having this discussion too, because I think you're on to something, that there's a difference in the magnitude of the offsetting tax benefit from the MFT versus the transportation impact fee. Those are much different numbers. But as far as quantifying that, I don't know. I'm going to think on that a little bit, maybe talk to our partners at Arch about that maybe a little bit.
So this is germane to a conversation that we're going to have a little bit later. There are economics when it comes to a development that have to be considered, and that's why we're weighing the traffic impact fees, not making them so high that we stifle development. Now, the Main Street property that's been discussed here tonight had 10% affordable units. They were, this was ownership units, so it wasn't quite in the MFT. And it's my understanding, and I guess this is a question, the MFT program requires the units to be similar to all the other units in the program. So there is no segregation. The MFT program requires them to be similar of quality and size, and the two bedrooms need to look like two bedrooms, all the other two bedrooms. One bedroom, same. The main difference is, and the Main Street proposal... The main difference is, in the Main Street proposal, we got 40 or 37, I think it's 40 townhomes, and then four of those 10% were going to be condominium type of units for sale. And there was other benefits attached to that, and more benefits kept getting layered on. There was talk of these units being segregated because they're not like, looking like the the townhomes. You can layer on so much stuff to to a developer that you won't get any. And that's a good example of, the Main Street project was a good example of continued layering on of stuff and delay where we got no affordable units. We went from getting 10% to nothing. So the existing DA that it reverts back to now has no affordable units. So the MFT program is the incentive to, that we offer developers to say, okay, you're going to get a tax break. In turn, you build affordable housing into perpetuity. So layering more and more and more on that is essentially a way of killing it. So I hear people saying, we need to do 20% affordable. We need to do X, and we need to add more and more. And so if we're sincere about affordable housing, I think we should discuss what the true impacts would be for this amended motion, because I'm guessing this is spurred on the Main Street proposal that we, that they just walked away from. And that was what was discussed in planning, some some type of being segregated. Well, townhomes and condos, just by nature, are separate, going to look separately anyway. So I would be advocating for us to, we're going to have another discussion on this of having staff study it more and coming back with a little deeper discussion on what this actually, the actual impacts to affordable housing would be. Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying on the MFT program. I think it's really important to know that that is already written into that language. So if they want to take advantage of that, that's already there. I also very much support affordability and doing what we can to do the balance between developers who are businesses and they need to make sure that they make a profit versus the benefits back to our community. I don't think that we should just start amending this without serious consideration and thought. We have spent a tremendous amount of time on our transportation plan, on our traffic plan. We have done study sessions. We have gone deep into this. And to have this kind of thrown at us at the last minute with really not a lot of time to even think through it, that's not something that I can support right now because I really want us to think end to end about how this would impact developments in the city.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So this information's been available. It's been in our code for some time. Being creative and coming up with options that say that once and for all, Woodenville doesn't want to have affordable housing that looks like affordable housing. We want to make sure that everybody gets to live with the dignity of living in a house or a home without being able to say, oh, but you live in that home, and we know that that home is separate. I don't see this as impacting a developer in a negative way. Developers will always say, yeah, this is going to affect our bottom line. Well, yeah, but also, you're not going to be paying transportation fees. So there is a give and a take here, and I think it's only fair that we say that all units in Woodenville, any construction for affordability, needs to look like everything else around it, and that we incorporate it. And I don't see this as anything that is a radical idea. And I think if more communities did this, where are developers going to build? If all of us band together and say, look, we all want affordability that looks exactly the same, and we want to include everyone else, then we're the ones in the driver's seat. But right now, we're kowtowing to whatever it is that developers tell us, and they're always going to sing us a sob story, but developers have very deep pockets, and they have very deep-pocketed investors. And asking for something in exchange for a tax break, that you just make it look like everybody else, is really not too much to ask. It's not going to put them out of business, and I'm happy to vote on this right now.
We just had the answer to the MFT. The MFT requires you to build them in similar size and standard of the other ones. So this talk of building them different isn't allowed under the MFT program, so we don't need to reinvent that.
Point of order, I was not referring to MFT. I was referring to this municipal code referencing MFT.
Councilmember, that's not a point of order. I've explained to you 100 times. You need to point to a rule.
It is a point of clarification, which is a point of order. A point of clarification is to clarify a fallacy of statements.
You're consistently interrupting me. I have the floor. You are, point's not well taken. So the MFT program by itself does not allow units to be built differently. That's, that is, that's just a fallacy. There is no, we're trying to layer something on that. So this is, this is, there is, there is a pattern here of layering stuff on under the guise of getting more affordable housing, and in this instance, of some fictitious segregation. We've had, we've had the Main Street property across that's going to open up. Those units, that's our first units, 10% of those, those are first units of affordability that has been built in Woodenville downtown ever, and certainly since the Green, Greenbrier project. So those units have to be built, similar standard and size, the one bedrooms will look like the one bedrooms, two bedrooms, et cetera. That's required. So in exchange, we give them a tax break, and they build those for us. The, the, the constant layering on, Councilmember Best Campbell has never voted for affordable housing, not one time.
Point of order, can we please stop personal attacks and stick to the motion?
That's not a personal attack.
It is. Councilmember Best Campbell does. I do not consent to you inserting your words into my mouth.
Councilmember Best Campbell, your point's not well taken. The Main Street project was our first affordable. She didn't vote for that. The the Mobax project had affordable housing to it. She didn't vote for that. The Main Street proper property over here where we had affordable housing, she didn't vote for that. So all of a sudden, it's going to be layered on actually somehow. I think that's just just disingenuous. So I will be voting against this, and if staff would like to weigh in on this in the future, that'd be great. Any further discussion? Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Just one thing. I I agree with everyone else. I believe in the concept of what's been brought to us. The problem is, we haven't time to consider this and actually think about what the actual fallout and the changes would be. My question would be, why wouldn't we decide to do this in in order to say visually, why don't all housing look like the same if you're developing a development throughout Woodenville? And that'd be a question. But I don't think that this is the actual time to bring this motion forward, so I will not be supporting this motion at this time. But I would encourage Councilmember Best Campbell to reach out to others who have said on the diocese that we're looking to to inspect this a bit deeper, to actually look at it a little bit deeper with her and bring it back at some point in the future.
Mr. Mayor.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Mayor, what I I might suggest is is one possibility. I I think, I kind of listened to the conversation. I I understand, I think, the loophole that Councilmember Best Campbell is is getting at, and I understand and commend, I think, the the goal there. I think there's also the legitimate concerns about, is layering, is adding that piece on because utilizing that exemption is optional for a developer? Would that, would the math work out that they're just not going to take advantage of that option? And and get to the concern, I think, that we're hearing that it, this may lead to less affordable housing. I think, if it's, if it's suggestion, if I can make the suggestion, I think staff and council can work up kind of this language and and get it in the packet for you for your next meeting, hopefully your next meeting. That's next week. And I think hopefully, and this is the less sure piece of it, Arch, I know, we've worked with them on some some kind of back-of-the-napkin analysis before, and I think this, as I sit here and think about it, may be more straightforward. Is the tax break, that not paying the tip on that unit going to outweigh what their lost revenue on that unit is going to be? And I I probably can guess what that answer is, but we can certainly talk to Arch, and then it's a numbers conversation instead of a theoretical conversation.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans.
No.
Councilmember Edwards.
No.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Millman.
No.
Councilmember Arndt.
No.
Councilmember Taylor.
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
No.
Motion fails, six one. Back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Can I get a roll call vote on that, too, please? I'm trying to determine how many times you've spoken to the main motion. And you've already spoken to the main motion. So Councilmember Best Campbell.
So, Mr. Buchanan, you had said that you were going to come back with some information from Arch about that discrepancy for us?
I can, based on the result of that vote, whether or not that's necessary.
Well, there's the vote, and then there's what people want to vote on, and what we want to say. Is there a consensus that we care about it? Are we just voting against it because Councilmember Best Campbell voted for it? I guess that's the question for the council.
I can, I can work with Arch to get the information, and I don't know that I can have it by next week, but I will do what I can on that. I can provide it. It would have to come back and be an amendment to the motion at that second reading, at your next meeting. So and then presumably, Mr. Ganson can clarify this, that would have to be made because that motion's already failed, that'd have to be made by somebody who prevail, who was on the prevailing side of that motion. I think we're getting to Robert's rules at that point. But, Mr. Ganson, I don't know if you have thoughts on that piece?
Yeah, I think that's probably correct.
Okay. So one of the six voting no would have to vote to make that amendment at the next meeting. I can certainly work to provide that information at your next, hopefully at your next meeting.
Any further discussion? Seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Evans.
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards.
Aye.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
Yes.
Mayor Millman.
Yes.
Councilmember Arndt.
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Yes.
Most carries unanimous. Thank you. Business item number 10, first reading of ordinance number 773, adopting the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Mr. O'Neill.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So tonight's first reading of ordinance 773 for the Capital Improvement Plan. This is going to be the second to last time you'll see it on the agenda, hopefully, this year. This is the culmination of an eight-month planning process. This document is aligned with the upcoming biennial budget in total. There are 73 total projects with a total project cost of over $250 million. For the next two years and what's in the budget, there are 24 fully or partially funded projects with over $69 million in project funding. I'll note that not all of that is local funding. A substantial portion of that is grants, carryover money from previous bienniums, et cetera, but still a substantial docket of projects that we have on the horizon. There are some notable changes I wanted to bring up since last time you saw this document or this project list. The first is related to the 136th Sidewalk Project. At the previous council meeting, we had talked about a reduced scope there, so adding some safety improvements, but not the full buildout with a curb and a sidewalk. So that is reflected in this, this document, and that reduced the the cost of that project from about 1.8 million to 1.1. And we also changed the title of that, that project slightly to to highlight that it's not a full sidewalk buildout, it's, but it's safety improvements, it's widening the shoulder. And so that we don't lose sight of the full buildout of the sidewalk, we added a new project to the end of the street section, which, which will essentially be there so that council can consider building that project out and doing the full, the full-fledged sidewalk. So we wanted to make sure that was on the radar for the next biennium, where council can then, once again, deliberate and and determine whether they want to further improve that section of roadway. The other thing I wanted to highlight is City Hall EV chargers. There's, there was a small change to the cost of this project, but it's purely in the assumption for grant revenue. So we've been going out for grants. We have not been successful yet. We will continue to go out. This project had $39,000 in local funding from the previous biennium. We are planning to carry that over, but we increased that grant assumption just to recognize that we, we know the project is going to be substantially more than what that, that initial estimate covered. So now I believe it's 39,000 in local funding, and then for a total of 275,000, again, assuming the difference comes from to be determined grant in the future. There is another change that is not reflected in the draft. This has come up very recently. We've had a few instances at City Hall with people coming in and causing disturbances. And and what this project will do is to take the five swinging doors, as you can see in this, this picture, most of which are these half, you know, only a couple of feet tall, most of them swivel both ways. So removing all five doors, replacing four of them with a physical door, and then removing the fifth door altogether and just framing off that section so that people can't, can't gain access into the staff areas of City Hall. The first phase of this project is the design. That amount is going to be $30,000 to design these. It sounds like a lot, but all five of these, these doors are are very unique and very tricky to, to work with, especially on the first floor, where there is no ceiling to tie into, right? It it goes up to the second store and then and then beyond into the vaulted ceiling. Some of them are at angles. They're not all ADA width, so there's a lot of work that needs to be done there. In addition to that, we need to run electrical and so on. So the first, first step is doing the design work to get the project bid ready, and that is at a cost of about $30,000. And we're estimating an additional $100,000 to do the actual buildout at these five locations for a total project cost of $130,000. The plan as of right now, I'm working with Mr. Fritz, Finance Director, is that this project will be funded out of general fund reserves. But again, this is something that's, that's come up recently, and, and city manager and the management team have have discussed this in length and feel that now is the the right time to be making these improvements to to protect our greatest asset, which is our staff. So at, at this stage, this, this item is one last opportunity to make any changes, ask questions, comments, and the next steps will be to, one, make the adjustment I just mentioned with the, the front desk security project, so that's reflected in the document. That will be included in your agenda item for the second reading, which we are planning to bring to council, not at the meeting next week, but at the first meeting in, in December with the rest of the budget adoption. We'll make any changes or recommendations that are made by council tonight. There are some housekeeping items we need to do with the document, adding page numbers. Apologize if that made it confusing as you were going through it. Adding additional images, some, some reference documents from the Department of Commerce, and then, again, like I said, second reading on December 3rd, where we'll be part of the the budget adoption. So that's the end of my presentation. I have the recommended motion, but also willing to answer any questions or concerns.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, just go back to the door. Did you run that by the engineering group for solutions? It seems, seems like a pretty simple solution to, to that. If you're talking about it just swings open, it's, why don't you put a, why don't you put a handle on it or a cipher lock or something that just prevents it from opening?
So the solution includes putting a full door with a badge reader.
Why a full door? Could it?
Because you can step over that.
You could step over the desk. So what are you going to do about?
They, that one, it's hard to see here. You've got the plexiglass that's been installed there, and that was still remaining from COVID. All these desks originally were, were built, and they've been installed. The public works is a great example, where you see those three rivets on either side of the kind of wood pane on the bottom left there. There's wood inserts that go into that, that bring that to that full plexiglass. So part of this is also looking at how do we make those counters more secure, because they, they can easily just, if somebody was so motivated, can jump over those counters.
And and I'll add, for those barriers, that piece of this project, we are expecting to handle in-house with staff, the barriers on the, the countertops. So that would create the barriers over the counter, so you can't just jump over, and this project would be to put a full door in, so you can't just hop over that piece as well.
That's a problem. People have, people have jumped over the counter.
We, we've had, especially recently, we've had several, and keep in mind, I think this is a great example, with the police counter. We have all manner of customers that come in there. Several have been very disgruntled and have, and have behaved in a very threatening way in our lobby. So this is an employee's safety and security measure, and that's why I'm recommending it in the budget. There, there's also not just the, the safety and security of it, at any given time, especially on Fridays, when we have half the staff alternating. especially on Fridays when we have half the staff alternating off. Not all these counters are manned, and it can very easily, where somebody could access that, slip in, take resources, take, walk out with a half dozen laptops, and nobody would know if they do it quick enough. So, there's, I think there's also the security piece of that from an asset protection that we need to be considering.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
So, the speed cameras are included under your budget, under, so it's not anything the council's going to be voting on. Lake Forest Park is currently struggling with their speed cameras. I've heard it called budget heroin. You get the first high of making all of the money, and then you're constantly chasing to get that, that income level off of those speed cameras as time goes on. And now Lake Forest Park is in the unenviable position of having to keep funding speed cameras that aren't really bringing in enough revenue, but it's enough revenue where they have to be able to make their budget balance. So, my concerns with this is that we've never really identified where we want to do it. The only conversation that we've had is down by the KFC in Woodinville Pediatrics. That's $900,000 a year, it's $300,000 to start the program. We haven't even identified what the safety measures are that we want to fund with that money. So, I have a hard time supporting that when it just looks like it's a way to get money. And the second one is what was formerly ST 19004, which is 136th Avenue. Since we have a reduction in cost on that, I'd like to move that we add some of those temporary speed bumps to, to at least calm the traffic in that area. No one likes speed bumps, okay?
Anybody else? Any discussions? I, I'll, I, you know, I applaud, it's probably well past due that we have added security in City Hall. In fact, the first time I came here, I was shocked how easy it was to get upstairs and wander around. And so, I, I, you know, I value the safety, and our staff deserves to have a safe working environment. My past employer, the City of Everett, it was, it was very secure on how to get into the building. So, I, I absolutely applaud that, and it's probably a long time coming. And we have had incidents where there's been some disgruntled people causing commotion. As far as the speed cameras, I don't know where this, this, Councilmember Best Campbell's mentioned the KFC, her husband mentioned the KFC thing. I don't know where that comes from. We've talked about it in school zones, school areas. I think that's more, most appropriate point for speed cameras is slowing traffic and slowing cars in areas where our kids, particularly around Woodinville High School and Woodin Elementary, is where I think is the most probably appropriate for those. I don't know where the KFC thing keeps coming from, because there's, I, I think there's a Chrisless school a little ways from there, but I, I don't know where that comes from. It's got to be around a school, so. I, I think we have a good CIP, and, and I applaud all the work that's done on that. Councilmember Edwards?
Yeah, I just want to thank you for taking the proactive approach to identify that safety concern there specifically. As you mentioned, making sure our staff is safe is of the utmost importance. And identifying these type of things before we have a serious issue come up, I think, is integral to all this. So, thank you for identifying that before something came up. And I think, although it may cost a little bit, that investment is well worth it to make sure this is a safe place to be for everyone.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah. I also want to take a look at PA 25-001, and it looks like $6 million for next year, or for the two-year budget. I'm not sure that, yeah, I'm not sure that that's right. That should have an asterisk, because isn't that dependent on a levy going through? It's kind of dependent on, and, and then we're not going to pay for it, right? It's the district that's going to pick that up, the North Shore community? Or are we gifting it to the community?
That's still a discussion that council has to have with NPRSA. At this point, the council has directed myself to pursue property for that NPRSA acquisition with that number in mind. So, that reflects that conversation.
But are we budgeting that, or is it a contingency should that levy go through?
Right now, it's shown as we are budgeting to spend that. Before we acquire property, council obviously would have to approve offers and purchase and sale agreements. But this includes that money in the budget. It's, as it's written today, is not contingent on, obviously, council would have to approve those purchase and sale agreements and could do so contingent on, if, if it desired, on a levy from NPRSA passing.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
So, it was at our July 23rd meeting when the chief gave us a presentation on speed cameras, and it was precisely around Chrisless, which is at the intersection of KFC and Woodinville Pediatrics. We were all there, I was remote, but I have it in my notes here. We discussed that location because it was the likely highest return on investment for those cameras. Doesn't say it was the safest place to put the cameras. That is the problem I have with this agenda item, is that it doesn't have the precise location of where we're going to put it. We're budgeting for something, how do we know it's $900,000 in whatever school zone? We're, we're saying it's going to bring in this much money, but now we don't know where it is. So, the, the initial discussion was indeed at that location, and the constant inflection of my name, I appreciate, because indeed, that's not what was said. We had an entire discussion about this location and whether or not it made sense. We also talked about the location by Wilmot Gateway Park. Parks are also allowed to have speed cameras. Are we interested in using the speed cameras for safety, or are we using them as a revenue source? I think it's disingenuous to use it as a revenue source, which is why I would like to see what safety improvements we can do around schools. The speed bumps, which did not pass in my earlier motion, would have been part of it. This is about talking and not just hiding behind Mr. Buchanan, putting it into his budget so that the council doesn't have to have this discussion in front of the citizens.
Councilmember Evans?
Thank you. So, today, we're here to talk about the budget that we've been talking about for quite a while. Yes, there are things in the budget that still need to be figured out. We still need to decide. But if that money's not budgeted, we can't even have that conversation. So, we are not today deciding the location of any potential speed cameras. We are simply holding space. So, if we decide to move forward with that at a future council meeting with a lot of additional information, we can actually vote to approve it because we've budgeted for it. If we choose not to move forward with it, well, we have money that we can now repurpose to something else. So, let's stick to the conversation that we need to have today, which is the budget and all the work that has gone into it. I also am very supportive, I, I was shocked as well at how, how easy it was to get in here. Like, I'm used to working on Microsoft campuses where you are badged in, and nobody's just wandering the hallways. And I think that it's well overdue to, to make the staff safe at work, so, thank you.
Councilmember Arndt?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff who worked incredibly hard on this. I know this year has been a particular challenge because we have a lot of projects that are in process, that need to happen, and that require funding. And our funding streams are not as robust as they have been in past bienniums. So, I just want to thank you for taking a hard look. And I do understand that there are some assumptions for projects baked in. I had a conversation with the city manager about the speed cameras particularly, and what assumptions were included as part of the budget numbers. And it was a very conservative assumption, but based on the cost of similar programs in other cities and the revenue that they had seen from cameras in school zones on roads that were similarly trafficked to where we had discussed putting them near our schools in the city. So, I was very happy with those kind of conservative assumptions for that particular project. And I do look forward to the robust discussion about where exactly that might go forward. I know that any revenues that come in from those cameras are restricted so that they have to be spent on safety, transportation safety improvements. So, they are not going to be part of our general fund moving forward. And we are not going to be in the position of our neighboring city of Lake Forest Park, where we are addicted to this unending stream of funds coming into our general fund, because any revenues from these cameras would be restricted by state law, which is a recent state law, to traffic safety improvements. So, thank you for working hard, I support this. I know there were some difficult decisions to be made to make this budget balance.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
I also want to chime in on the safety. I want to point out that, that is something that a, a lot of, on council noticed it, but no one brought it forth. Thank you for actually bringing it up. And for those who are not concerned with the safety of staff, at least be concerned with the things that our staff deals with. A lot of that is sensitive information. People deal with passports and have data and information as well as their own person behind that counter. I appreciate them being more safe while they deal with that information. So, please move forward with that. As for the traffic cams, I am also opposed, I did bring this up with the city manager, and it should be on our budget, just to make sure if it does go through, we have that money budgeted. But one thing that has been brought up is that the cameras cannot be used for a general budget. And anything that goes through, I pointed out when this came out the previous time, I'd like to make sure that it's used to improve our, our traffic design, to make those cameras obsolete.
I'd, I'd like to weigh in a couple of things that are being glossed over that I think should be made aware of the public that we serve, is that there's a lot of jurisdictions around us that are really struggling with their budgets and have, having budget deficits and having to raise taxes. This budget is coming in with a surplus. We're, we're living within our means, as I believe we should. And also, we're not raising taxes. So, those two things are a, a pretty good feat in this economic climate with inflation and, and things that we're struggling with. And we're still able to get a lot of really cool, good projects and safety projects, and parks and trails and, and roads and overlays and all the things that the city does. So, kudos to staff on all the hard work for it. The, the speed cameras seem to be a hot topic. I'm, I'm in favor of the speed cameras in that the, the reality of it is that we've been down two officers for quite some time. We are in no danger of, of receiving those two officers here in Woodinville due to, probably mostly due to our lower crime rates in some other areas. So, that's a good thing. It's a double-edged sword where we can't get another officer to do some traffic control programs that I know the chief wants to do. If we do decide to put speed cameras in a school zone, for example, the one I favor right now preliminarily is over by Woodin Elementary and Woodinville High School. As Councilmember Arndt mentioned, we, we would take that revenue and improve safety issues like sidewalks and possibly speed bumps and, and different improvements over there with that exact revenue that's required to be improved, to be used to be improved, safety issues. So, I'm looking forward to more of a conversation of that. And the, I'm looking forward to a conversation about how we can provide a community rec center and a pool to our, our community, too. So, I'm happy that that's in the budget as well. So, any other questions, discussion? Seeing none, do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to pass the first reading and adopt ordinance number 773, amending the city's comprehensive plan to include by reference the 2025-2030 Capital Improvement Plan. Second?
A motion, a second. Deputy Mayor Randolph, discussion?
I do think you picked up one thing there at the, the last moment about improving things for our local residents. One of the things that we do with this plan is that we're actually putting forth our initiatives that say this is what the people who elect us to office want. So, I certainly invite people in the community, and we'll be talking about public engagement a little bit later. But it's, it's things that we're actually putting on paper to be able to say, these are the things that our community wants, and these are improvements that our people need.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Arndt?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
No.
Deputy Mayor Randolph?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-1, thank you. Business item number 12, Resolutions Number 651, Adoption of Woodinville Community Engagement Plan. Mr. O'Neill?
Point of order? We haven't done 11.
You're right. We have a second part of, of business item 11. Thanks for bringing that to my attention. And it's the first reading of ordinance number 776, Property Tax Levy.
Good evening, council. One moment while I grab the, you threw me for a loop when you skipped the other one. I'm like, I'm confused. One moment here, let me get my staff presentation up. Okay, so, this is a part of the public hearing that's been continued. I have a short presentation for you, and we'll, afterwards, we'll be happy to take questions from council. Then I would recommend that you open the public hearing, receive public testimony, and so on. And I'll cover that at the very last slide. My presentation's fairly short this evening. Even though I think there's 12 slides in total, most of them are titled, well, a number of them are title slides, and there's really only seven that really go into the meat of things. The first thing I want to talk about is property tax. The city, if it wants to receive property tax revenue, it has to levy it on an annual basis. And that has to be done by November 30th of each year and provided to King County so that they can then process it through their statutory requirements. The city council also is allowed to do a property tax increase on what was levied in the prior year by 1%. That would be a council manic increase and could be done without the vote of the people. Anything over the 1% with one exception would require a vote of the people. That exception is centered around this concept of bank capacity, and I'll go into that in just a little bit. But one of the things you, the, the Woodinville has done over the last 18 years has decided not to raise property tax by that 1% with the exception of two of those years. So, 16 out of, out of 18, there has been no property tax increase by this council. It is the city's second-largest source of general fund operating revenue and is critical to ensure that we can continue to fund our most basic services. One of the com, the components of this process that makes it a little bit less intuitive is the council will levy an amount that is a not-to-exceed amount. But the county actually calculates our actual levy based upon information that's unknown to us today. So, there's estimated factors that go into that calculation right now. And within the next, within the next four weeks, the county locks down those factors and is able to determine our actual levy. So, for example, in 2024, the city council levied $3,775,000. The King County's calculation of our actual levy came out to $3,749,747. And I'll also go through a demonstration of where those estimates are and explain that in, in a couple of minutes here. So, I mentioned bank capacity. Bank capacity is derived from when you don't do the 1% council manic increase. The city, it's automatic, we reserve the right to be able to do that, that council manic increase in the future since we didn't do it in those preceding years. And it, the calculation is really simple. You take what King County says our allowable levy is today, subtract that, or subtract from that what our actual levy is today, and our bank capacity is the $758,000 that is shown on the slide here. So, council has the authority to raise taxes by the 1% plus an additional $758,000 if the council saw a need- the council saw a need to do that, and to tap into that bank capacity. And there's a little proviso on these slides with a note saying, provided it falls within other property tax limits, because there's a number of other property tax limits that get applied to the calculation. So for the 2025 property tax levy as proposed by the city manager and staff, we're proposing that the city council authorize a levy amount of $3,940,000. And this little box below that gives you how that, that amount is derived. So I have the 24 levy at the top line on the rightmost column, and then the next row is showing a 0% property tax increase. So no added dollars from a property tax increase, and there's no bank capacity increase in this calculation at all. State law allows us to recover the costs from prior year's refunds, which was a little under $5,000. And then the two factors that are estimated is new value added through new construction and improvements to property, both local and state-assessed properties. We have an estimate from King County that gives me an idea of where the ballpark's going to land, and that is at record levels this year. And we don't even have a value at all for the state-assessed numbers right now.
Mr. Fritz, can you, can you give us some examples of the new construction improvements? What would, what would go into that bucket? What, what is going on that would, would trigger that?
All of the development, so the development here at Wooden Creek that has been finalized for the phases three, the development down at the Harvest Project, and the development over here across the street would all be new value added into our property tax rolls from, that allow for a property tax increase. And as to when King County brings those new values in, they have a process that they follow. So it's, it's not, it's not immediate. There's a lag. But we're starting to see the benefits in our property tax rolls of some of these larger projects coming to fruition.
Does that also include single-family residents if somebody built an addition or added a duplex or something along those lines?
Absolutely. It just wouldn't equate to the scale of assessed valuation that we're seeing.
Right. So you just gave us the main ones, but there are people around Woodinville, I assume, that we're tracking, keeping track of or aware of that are adding to their properties and...
As a permit's processed, those permit, those, those values get reported to the King County assessor and recorded, and those new values get included into the assessed valuation rolls.
Right. That's, that's going to be any construction that's resulted in a new property value. So it's, right now, I don't think we can say, you know, that's, it's that project, that project, and that project. But to Mr. Fritz's point, the scale of that is obviously reflective of the larger development projects coming online and hitting the tax rolls.
We're roughly around, King County's estimating right now that the new construction improvements to property is roughly around $240 million. I'm elevating that because it's an estimate. I want to be able, I want our property tax levy to be able to capture all new value. So if at the 11th hour, they got new numbers that brought it up to $300 million, we would still capture all of the value in this year's property tax levy or in the 25 levy. So as a result, because those are estimated, the recommendation is the $3,940,000 levy amount. I estimate that will likely land around $3,800,000, well, maybe $3,900,000, but probably not 940, somewhere in there, when it's all said and done. So I'd like to talk a little bit about the city manager's proposed budget as it relates to salaries, benefits, and staffing. I don't have in this presentation anything about the position changes that Mr. Buchanan showcased at the October meeting, but this is information that wasn't brought up at the October meeting. It has to do with the assumptions that go behind the salary numbers. So it continues. The intern program, which we've successfully done for a number of years, it provides for an intern in three different of our divisions, the executive department, Public Works Department, and then our IS Systems Division for GIS intern. It's 400 hours a year for each year. The budget also includes a general wage increase in 2025 of 3.6%. And historically, the city's based that off of the CPIW, June changes, Seattle, Tacoma, Bellevue statistics. And then for 2026, it has a placeholder of 3% built into the, in the budget assumptions. This budget does not include the annual retention bonus, which was a part of the compensation for staff in 2023 and 2024. So the retention bonus would sunset at the end of this year with the final payout in January of 2025. The medical, it includes increases to the medical premiums for 2025, roughly 7.5% on average across the different programs, and it assumes an increase of medical premiums in 2028 of 8%, which is historically the assumption we make for year two, year over year. I think that's it on the salaries assumptions. Adjustments to the budget. So since we presented the budget in October, there's been new information that's come in. We've identified a couple of things that had needed changes, so I wanted to detail some of those changes in here. Although, I would point out that yet another change was brought up today. The, of the $130,000 safety improvements, 30 of those thousand dollars, 30,000 of those dollars may be spent this year in the design piece. So I'll not only be asking council for a budget amendment for that project for '25, '26, well, to approve a budget that includes that project for '25 and '26, but asking council for an amendment for 30,000 of that to be spent in this year. So I detailed out all of the changes. I tried to, where applicable, provide pagination of where those changes are applicable. So the first bullet, there was a spreadsheet error that didn't capture $230,000 worth of expenditures, so we fixed that. Health benefit costs for our represented employees came in a little lower than budgeted, so we factored that in. The project change, or scope reductions that Mr. O'Neill talked about as part of his CIP presentation, we incorporated that in on page 107 there, and so on. So all of these bullets give you the vast majority, well, gives you all of the changes that have been made to date to our, all of our worksheets that make up the budget. And when we provide you the final budget in December, the ordinance will include any changes that we've made that council accepts and any changes that council asks for.
I was just going to add, many of these I know were identified. We had the opportunity, Mr. Fritz and I, to sit down with a number of you, one-on-one, and go through questions. A lot of those were identified here, so I appreciate that, that work as well. But a lot of these mentioned as we're going through, a lot of them are specific to CIP and timing. There are some of the structural changes, as Mr. Fritz mentioned, where we had errors in the spreadsheet numbers, where we've got those incorporated now. But I think for the most part, the, kind of the line items at the bottom of it didn't change significantly.
Okay, so to that end, the, this gives you a big picture of the operating budget and the impacts of the changes that we've applied to it. So the, the top table there shows you the general fund. Had an operating margin originally of $6,310. With the modifications that we put into it today, since it was first proposed, it now has an operating margin of $12,143. So we, we've worked hard to mitigate impacts of any of those changes that we've had to put into the budget. Capital outlay. I don't actually have a slide on this other than the title slide here. Your staff report contains an itemized report of all the capital outlay that we're proposing in our budget, and it's even organized by highest cost to lowest cost for your convenience. It has a description that's been posted on our website and available for, you know, our constituents to read. And so I just wanted to bring that up and point it out. And because of the conversation that occurred during the CIP, I do want to talk about a little bit the, the decision to move or to put the speed zone cameras as capital outlay was an accounting decision. The speed zone cameras are not considered a capital improvement. They are a capital investment, however, so they go into the capital outlay component of it. So that's why it wasn't a part of the CIP as opposed to the capital, as opposed to the city manager proposed budget. And then with that, staff is happy to take questions on our presentation, and we'd recommend that the council receive public testimony for the public hearing, that they then continue that public hearing until November 19th, and then deliberate and hopefully pass first reading of the property tax ordinance, which has to be completed by the 30th of this month.
Councilmember Evans.
So I just want to say thank you for summarizing all of these. It's really great to see. And also, thank you to Fritz and you, Mr. Buchanan, for all of your time and going through all of our questions, especially my questions. I really appreciate it. It really helped to clarify in one summary of the things that are changing. So thank you.
Councilmember Wes Campbell.
So the budget item about Microsoft surfaces. Before the meeting, Ms. Hanke was up talking to those of us who were having issues with our surfaces. It seems to be that there's some issue with Granicus. Our computers are several years old. Is the upgrade, that's $7,500, I'm going to assume that that doesn't include any potential upgrades to council computers that are five-plus years old?
Well, I'd have to look at this cycle, but I suspect that council computers are up for the next cycle of replacement. I'm not positive on that, but I could certainly check it. So what we do is we have all of our computers on a replacement cycle, and the moment that they roll off of the warranty for support, we start to cycle them out and buy new ones. And it tends to be like a four-year lifecycle. So if, in fact, years are five years old, then yes, they would probably be the next ones on the list.
Okay, but they don't need to be included in this budget? You have it included just sort of in an ongoing replacement program?
Yes. It's, it's all of the surfaces, all the computers are in an ongoing replacement program, and they'll be cycled through.
Okay.
Just to clarify, the hubs, the $7,500, those for the, the mobile hub, the big hubs that we have, these aren't your guys' devices?
The ones that are always not working for us in there?
Which is why the $7,500.
I had a question about, am I losing my mind that we bought garbage cans for 175th? That they're somewhere here, and they haven't been deployed? Have I lost my mind? I thought that this was either last year or the previous year.
I want to answer that question, but regarding the trash cans, no, we have the trash cans. And I think that, I'll check with, we'll check with Public Works, but I think they have been deployed.
On 175th?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we got the trash cans along there, a number of them.
Okay. And then the last one, Mr. Fritz, when we met, we had talked about the template and the font that's used in the budget, that it's, at least from my old eyes, difficult to read, and I imagine that I don't have, I'm not the only one in possession of old eyes. Have we looked to find a font that would make it a little easier? I mean, not that your budget is not riveting, but I just want to see it a little bit easier to read because that font is a, that's a rough one to read.
When, after our meeting, I went in and I modified the font in the document, and it threw my formatting out so much that it would have required several hours of work. So I abandoned that approach, but I will work to make the final document a font that everybody finds favorable.
Thank you.
Oh, the, the capital outlay list does include endpoint, endpoint refresh, which is a $7,200 budget.
$2,000.
$72,000 budget. Thank you. And that is, that is the budget that cycles the replacement of computers.
And it's, and that also includes council, because previously, we've had outlays that when we bought council computers, the first time, they were separate.
We changed all of that. All of this, all of the equipment is basically rented to different divisions, and IT owns it from a business kind of perspective, and then IT cycles it through based upon how old it is.
Just a couple of things I wanted to point out, that our GS, GIS has already proved invaluable already. When we made, or I brought a presentation to NPRSA with a GIS-created document that showed travel time in the NPRSA area, and that was very useful to illustrate. And that, that was put together very quickly and is very much appreciated. I'd also like to congratulate past councils, this council. In a previous, either, I can't remember if it was with Mr. Fritz or the city manager or in a city council meeting, but we highlighted that Woodinville is in the lowest 10%, or the lowest 10, I should say, of city, city, city property, city portion of the property taxes around. And that's, that's a great testament to all the hard work that council and staff has put together. And I think you guys have done a great job, and I appreciate all the hard work. I know there's a lot of moving parts given to us or to you by the, from us and by the county and King County sheriffs and state and all kinds of things. So I appreciate all the hard work. Any other...
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I guess I would just make one, one comment that I didn't include in my presentation, and that is that, you know, this process is all about giving the council a chance to finalize and approve the proposed budget. And the sooner we get feedback that you want X change or we don't need any changes, then the sooner we can get to work on finalizing that document. And there's, because the next meeting is only a week away, I've got a two-day turnaround on things. So thank you for laughing at that.
I will add to that, too. We've talked, and I know in many of you, when we had those individual conversations about the budget, and I'll just highlight it again, this will be out of date the day that you approve this, right? At the very next meeting, as sure as the sun will rise, we will approve something that was not in the budget. That's just how this works. It's an estimate looking out two years. It's a guiding document, but it will, it is sure thing that it will be wrong. So this is that, although he's put together as close to perfect as possible document, it is inherently an imperfect document.
He's trying to break my spirit.
Okay, any further, do I have a motion?
I first wanted to say I'm going to wait till the new year to bring in any changes to the budget.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Evans?
Point of order. We need to do...
Oh, it is, we do have an open public hearing.
Okay, do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
The public hearing is already open. The request should be for anyone to speak to the budget.
Okay, public hearings open. When I call your name, come to speak. And first up is Alex Campbell. You'll have five minutes.
You'll have five minutes.
Alex Campbell, I live within city limits, and thank you. I won't take five minutes. I spoke to you all last, was it now three weeks ago? Feels forever ago. October, sometime in October, about the very topic about speed cameras and the fact that they do depend on future votes. I looked into this a little bit more on July 6th. A new set of laws went into effect in King, in Washington State. These reiterated some points from before. I don't know exactly what the changes were, but specifically, you must take a vote to create an ordinance to approve a speed camera. You must have an analysis by staff to show that the new, that the location will not, it, it doesn't overly burden people, that it shows that there will be an ineffectiveness of other mitigations possibilities. My point with bringing this up is, there's a bunch of steps still to be had before this camera comes into existence. I understand that we want to put it in as a capital investment, that's an interesting term, I guess, but the, the fact is that you can't, you shouldn't, in my opinion, put any revenue in the budget. So, if 900,000 goes away, and you keep the 300 outgoing, and you're, you're now into an even worse deficit, because you can't be sure that budget is going to come in. It's, it's kind of a presumption of, of actually future votes. It looks like it's problematic. I will add some other details. Thirty-six minutes into his presentation, Chief Myers very specifically was talking about crash data. He talked about the intersection of 140th and 171st, which is that Woodinville Pediatrics building, where I've been many times, and the KFC on the other corner. And he said, he said, "The Bright Horizons preschool that is there, just slightly south of that, would allow you to define a school zone." Now, it's a private school that no one walks to, because it's a preschool, but you could design a preschool zone, and he said, "That would be the best place to get the most tickets." Yeah, I don't think he said tickets. He said, "That would be the place with the most infractions." So, I, I, it was very much discussed as that was the location. He then switched over to talking about Gateway Park. At no time did he talk about Wooden, Wooden Elementary, and no time did he talk about up on the West Ridge. No time did he talk about out by La La and Wellington. He did say those were school zones, but he never suggested those were a place that would need a camera. And truth to be told, I've been by Wooden on, once in a while. It's not moving very fast, because there's so many cars there, it's a lot of traffic. To that point, 900,000 tick dollars in tickets at $140 a ticket is over 6,400 tickets in a year. Given the number of school days, that works out to about 25 tickets a day. That's only four hours of a day, so about eight tickets an hour. You're going to need a lot of, of people coming through there to, to reach those numbers. And I come back to the point that you can't be sure about those numbers yet. You haven't done the analysis, so don't, don't depend on the revenue. That's my budget conversation for the night. I, I think I'll leave it at that and give you back a minute and a half. Bye.
That's it. I moved to pass first reading of ordinance number 776, levying property taxes for 2025 as presented.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion, Deputy Mayor?
I think we, we got a little ahead of ourselves, saying we weren't raising taxes. Now, we can officially say we're not raising taxes. Once again, I think that what these documents do actually points out things that we hope that our citizens are requesting, and where we actually put our money is where our focus will be. And we need to keep that in mind as we put together this budget, and I think everybody's done a good job. Really appreciate staff's hard work on this. I know that you had a lot of timelines. And yeah, thank you so much.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
I just wanted to say that Mr. Fritz has given a full, robust conversation in previous council meetings about how you calculate property tax in a very full, and some would say boring, but I would say interesting manner. And it's only because Mr. Buchanan had dissuaded him. But I, I just want to say that, Mr. Fritz, I have seen your presentation before, and if anybody would like to hear it, I think that they should make an appointment with you, and then you could have a whiteboard, and you could truly go through with painstaking detail about how the county calculates property taxes. But suffice it to say that it is, it is something that you shouldn't miss, and if you have to, you could go watch it historically, but it's much more entertaining to watch Mr. Fritz do it. He gets very excited, and he might even smile.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Edwards?
Yes.
Councilmember Best Campbell?
Yes.
Mayor Millman?
Yes.
Councilmember Aron?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Motion unanimous. Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. A lot of work went into that.
Mr. Mayor, I would ask whether or not you want to close the public hearing or continue it to the next meeting?
I move to close the public hearing for the budget, ordinance number 776, of Woodinville, levying property taxes for 2025.
Second.
And motion second. Any discussion? Deputy Mayor?
Nothing to discuss. I think we're closing the discussion.
Okay. Nobody else has signed up? Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Seeing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Business item number 12, resolution number 651, adoption of Woodinville Community Engagement Plan. Mr. O'Neill?
Thank you. So, once again, just a brief presentation, and then opportunity to answer any questions. So, the engagement plan before you tonight, this came about back in March 5th, when council made a motion to create a engagement subcommittee. That was staffed by three council members, Councilmember Evans, Randolph, and then chaired by Councilmember Edwards. Staff and the subcommittee met over the course of about seven months to develop this plan. It's designed to help guide how the city does engagement activities, and helps us to achieve greater participation, especially from those that we don't typically hear from. This plan was created with five specific components in mind. One, to provide fact-based community engagement methods. Two, evaluate the risk benefit to the different approaches. Three, integrate public engagement into the city's decision-making process. Four, design and deliver effective engagement processes. And five, monitor effectiveness by defining performance metrics. So, we use these as our, our guiding principles as we created this plan. Another component of the original motion that is not on the screen is that we were directed to do this by the end of the year, and it's still early November, so that's a big win. There are a couple of different pieces to the plan, the goals and objectives, where we set out what, what really is the scope of the plan, what are we trying to do, identifying audiences. This was a great section, because we were able to pull information that had already been collected from the comp plan, from the strategic plan, from the economic development plan. I'm probably missing one or two others. So, it was, it was helpful to be able to pull all that information and really drill down what, what the audience is, and what, what the makeup of the city is, and who we're trying to engage with. The plan also includes many different methods of engagement, how the city should go about doing engagement activities, what's the process. And then it wraps up with the media toolkit and engagement toolkit, which has really those functional documents and forms that we will use as we create future engagement events. In addition to the creation of this plan, and as part of the proposed budget, we are also investing in this program to help with being able to implement what the plan sets forth. That is being done through increased staffing capacity, update to the city's website, so a full refresh, updating the city's URL. So, this was something that was brought up, that the dot CI dot Woodinville dot WA dot US is not the most easy to remember or tell people, so we're hoping for a, you know, at Woodinville.gov type URL instead. The budget also includes videography, videography services to help us with content, and then the ability to stream events, especially council meetings, to YouTube, so it's more accessible. And that ends my presentation. So, happy to answer any questions. Unlike my last item, that we are not planning to bring this back to council, so this is kind of the one, the one opportunity, but, but willing to answer any questions and make any modifications as council sees fit.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So, I had a couple of specific suggestions that I wanted to add to this. One of the hardest parts about getting into city government is looking at our staff reports and knowing what it all means. We know what it means, because we have to know what it means. The public looks at it and goes, "Oh, that looks awful." So, if we could have a primer, this is how you read what this means. So, there's the, you see who the staff members are, you see what the budget impacts are. What does that mean? What does that mean? Is it budgeted? Is it additional budgeting? Demystifying what it is what we do. Let's take the, the difficulty and the mystique out of what we do. We read staff reports, but it would be nice if we could have a way for the public to read it and understand it a little bit better. I also think that public engagement would be improved if we had a little bit longer with the agenda before the meeting. Not everyone is willing to work on their weekends like we are. I know that that can put a burden on staff, but we're reaching the end of the year now. It might be something where we can extend it from, instead of five days to a meeting, can we have a, a full week? Again, the public would have more time to read, they would have more time to engage, and I think engaging in public meetings is important. Public hearing notices on social media, I know there was a suggestion made to the commission to do that. I know we have a paper of record, not everyone gets it. If the city's Facebook page could serve as a clearinghouse, I think that would be fantastic. Kirkland holds study sessions before some of their meetings, so when they're dealing with a weighty subject, instead of extending the council meeting, they hold study sessions before meeting, and the public can come and attend that as well. That way, they can go back and, at the very minimum, watch a robust discussion ahead of time, and then see the meeting. I also think it's important for community engagement to take all of the input that is provided to us by our commissions. We have a staff liaison, as well as a council liaison, who's supposed to bring information back to us. Our commissioners should feel free to pass along anything that people have heard from them. I think we should encourage that. We don't just need people who agree with us, we need people to tell us we're wrong. Without sand, the oyster will not make a pearl. And I also think that we should do our best, when the public addresses us in this meeting, whether they agree with us or not, I do think that we should give them the dignity of not challenging them and calling them out, and telling them that they're wrong. That is the surefire way to limit the number of people who come and speak to us. So, these are the things that are very specific, in addition to whatever is being presented here. I've read through all of it. I think that having these specifics are what I was looking for in the plan. There are the goals, and there's metrics, but I think that there are super easy ways to get there, and I think demystifying what we do should be number one. So, I don't know if this is something that I should make a motion on each one of these, if this is something that we can agree is important. I don't know, but I think that this is a good start, but we can always do better, and I would like us to really go out on a limb here and say, look, sit here, and as long as a meeting takes, we need to listen, and we need to demystify, and show people how to do what we do, because it really isn't that complicated.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, so thank you for all the work that went into this. Staff really did an amazing job at putting this together. I want to highlight a few of the key aspects that were brought up here. What this, this plan will do will really centralize the work of community engagement going forward. Regardless of who's at the dais, or who's at the staffing positions, this will be a centralized document that we can refer back to and build off for the future. Thanks to Councilmember Evans and Deputy Mayor Randolph, we really focused on tracking metrics going forward, too. So, how can we learn and keep improving to build off this living document that's going forward? And we, it's all about making sure we also track where we go. We're going to be reaching out to new groups, and using these processes here, we'll be able to make sure we meet people where they're at, and make sure we don't lose track of people, and make sure we get out to new places, and make sure that we, make sure our, our community is engaged and provide information in a way that people want to receive it and can receive it through multiple methods going forward. So, I think this project really just highlighted, the ideas that the council members brought up, while putting it in a way that really emphasizes a process that can be repeatable, it's based in metrics and facts, and could really take the city to the next level. The city's done an amazing job at community engagement this past year, and this will be a document I think can really take us to that next level as we build in the upcoming years. Thank you.
Councilmember Evans.
Yeah, also, thank you to the staff and to my fellow committee members. I know a lot of thought went into this. I just want to point out that this is a document that's supposed to be living and growing, and a framework for how this is approached by staff and, and, and really implemented. We purposely did not put explicit items that were going to happen, because we wanted to have the framework, basically the guardrails there to help guide, but give staff and give councils enough leeway to be able to decide which pieces of these really fit into, you know, projects or different outreach methods. And so, because of that, we, we were really explicit about saying, yes, we really do want to use our social media channels, but we didn't say, "What for?" We just said, "We wanted to make them more accessible, more engaging," because there's a lot of things that could go there, and if we listed every single one of them, this document would be thousands of pages. And, you know, we said we wanted to redesign the website, but you will notice, it's not super specific, because that's still a project that needs to be worked through. Again, this was meant to just be a framework, to help get us all on the same page, and to guide how we think about doing this moving forward, and we also see it as a living document. We said that many times within our meeting, that this would continue to grow and evolve, especially as we get some of those metrics back, and we see how this is landing within the community, what's working, and what still needs to be tweaked to work better.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
I would also like to celebrate my partners on the subcommittee. It was great working on this with you. And I also want to echo this, about this being a framework, and directly address some of the things that were raised by Councilmember Best Campbell. This is a framework that we're talking about, so the specific things that you have raised would be additional projects or initiatives, so we can definitely discuss those. But the idea of the framework is, it's a driver for the way that staff operates, and the way that we are able to actually connect to the community by using staff. One of the things that I am hoping that we will get out of this is better levels of communication with the public. It shouldn't be a, a great ordeal for people to try and figure out when the meetings are, what we're discussing, and one of the things that we discussed was actually bringing up ways to break our meetings down into things that were portable. But we want to do that as a project, because it's separate from what we're deciding as the framework. And the piece, piece that's super important about the framework, that I believe Councilmember Edwards mentioned, is bringing back the data and setting up specific ways for staff to actually operate. Those are things that'll make this continue going forward, where people have data when we request it, which is super important, and it comes up often. And it's also a way for us to figure out if we're actually connecting and landing with the community when we carry out certain processes and projects as a council. That's all I had to say.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, I, I think it's a good idea. One, one caveat is personal identifiable information. I think a lot of, lot of times when you have online information, people are reticent to put in names and a lot of details, so if you can allow maybe a neighborhood, or just a nickname, or something like that, because a lot of people don't want junk mail, they don't want something to be screenscaped and then used later with mass mailings. So, you know, if, if you do it and you're asking for feedback, then don't, don't get too much information, other than maybe the address, or something like that. So, you know, people can opt in and provide for more information, but a lot of people that I know don't want to sign up for anything, because they tend to get phone calls, and they get a lot of email follow-up, and, you know, so they're kind of limiting their social media exposure. So, just think about privacy.
Councilmember Aron.
Thank you. A couple of things that I appreciate.
Thank you. A couple of things that I appreciated from the plan. I know that the council has been very eager to increase our community engagement over the last few years, but previously we, we really didn't have a systematic approach to it. So it felt a little bit like throwing spaghetti at a wall. Let's try this, what if we do this? And it was always a little bit of a struggle to find the appropriate staffing and budgets and all of the details that go into throwing up a community survey or putting on an event that the public can attend. And so I appreciate that this is creating that systematic framework that includes guidelines and resource and feedback metrics so that as we are moving forward, we're not just guessing and hoping and thinking that we're engaging with the entire community in our efforts, which we do genuinely want to do, but we are going about it in a thoughtful and consistent manner over time so that we can really see, maybe we are not engaging with this part of the community over here and how can we change that moving forward. So I appreciate that part of the plan. And I also, as I was reading my packet over the last few days, I was attending a meeting about national community engagement on a different topic, and I noticed that they were using the exact same frameworks and metrics that are referenced in our plan. And I just thought, hey, we must be doing a pretty good job if we are being held to the same standards as this national presentation that I was watching this week. So kudos to staff and the subcommittee for that.
I'd like to add that seven months of work for this subcommittee, appreciate that. That's a lot of extra work and on a topic that's, I think is very important. This, when I first started the role on council, it reminded me a lot of my role running fire department union meetings and stuff. There, you would, you'd get a lot of misinformation being spread, you'd get angry people at a meeting, and then you'd try to get, you know, it's, it's hard to tell without good community engagement what the, the, the public that we serve, what they really do want. And you can't get good information from the public what they really want unless you're giving them accurate information and receiving back robust information. And that's, should be our role in, in providing as best we can within staffing and budgetary constraints, how do we serve the residents of Woodinville best? And the only way that I know to do that is to be able to get, to get and give accurate information so that we can develop policies and proposals in response to that. So I think this is very important. The, the, the number one item said fact-based community engagement, and I think that's good that that's number one because I think that's very important in our role. So I appreciate all the work and I think this is going to be a, a good benefit for the residents we serve.
Councilmember Best Campbell.
So since we're not going to talk specifics, when will we talk specifics? So we've got this document and it's great, but if it sits there and we don't add specifics to it, it just sits there. So how soon are we, I know we have to get through budget, but let's start talking and let's set it so that all of council, not another subcommittee to deprive the entire body of this discussion, how can we get involved so we get started on this engagement now? We've got the framework, so let's test it. It's a living document, great, let's let it run. I think that the better chance of success is getting more information out there. So January, maybe we've had a chance to lick our wounds by then. I'd like to see us come back and all of us discuss, okay, well, what's, what's the first thing that we're going to work on? And what does engagement look like? Is it prior to the decision being made or is it following the decision and telling people after we've made the decision? Do we want engagement beforehand or do we want it afterwards? And what are the processes that we're going to go through for both and be very specific? I'd like to see this come forward so that we can actually talk about it. We've got the framework, great, let's, let's run through it, let's see where the cracks are, let's see what we can improve, and let's get going.
Councilmember Evans.
The beauty of a framework is that it can be applied to projects that come forward before us. So the intention of this is as we start, you know, some of our big projects and as we move forward with current projects, that this is going to be built into that project. That's a big part of this framework is that we're not going to tackle replacing the trestle without having a piece of that project be built out using this framework. So it's not layering a whole bunch of go-dos into the framework, it's taking this living document and bringing it into the work that's naturally being done within the city. And that's going to include a new website, which will be its own project, and will have the engagement built in. It'll be some of our big capital improvement projects, which will be, you know, built in. And how this is applied is different. And so if you go through the framework, you'll see different checkboxes and different things that need to be considered as projects are brought forth. And it should be something that the council is asking for as these projects come forward to make sure that we are intentionally building it in at the right level for the projects.
Councilmember Edwards.
Yeah, I just want to build off what councilmember Evans said. Community engagement is not a subcommittee, it's not a project. Community engagement is everything we do. It's never stopping. We've been doing community engagement this entire time. This just adds an additional framework that we can use, as councilmember Evans said, for additional projects going forward. Staff is doing an amazing job at providing opportunities for future community engagement. I know the committee provided a few examples, but it doesn't need to stop at there. Council members can bring up new community engagement ideas. Things can be brought up at these meetings for us to discuss. Again, community engagement is something we always want to build on. It's our job, it's our core duty here as council members. So I think this provides that framework, but we never stop. We're, we're building community engagement continuously and there, there's always room for new ideas. And I think this is a time, whenever it may be, to keep having those conversations and bring them here to the dais if you so choose.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, a motion?
I'm going to approve resolution 651, adopting the Woodinville Community Engagement Plan.
Okay.
I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Business item number 13, Development Agreement Procedures. Mr. Buchanan.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I've got a brief presentation, but really this is meant to just help facilitate a conversation as we get into it. Certainly can answer questions. So this is regarding development agreement procedures and just going into it. All right. And which currently the procedures for evaluating and considering development agreements are captured in Woodinville Municipal Code 21.85.030. Procedures here on the screen, those are directly copied from code. But basically procedures, obviously, we can go through, come back to this if we want, but I've tried to distill it down. The four steps that were outlined there, application is submitted by the, the property owner, public hearing is held by the planning commission, PC forwards comments and recommendations to council, and then council takes action if, if deemed appropriate, and which also could be obviously denying an, an application. The actual process is a little bit more involved, as many of you have been through, as we've done a number of these in the, in recent years, with a couple of extra steps in there. The application is submitted. We have, by practice, brought that application to council before it gets assigned to planning commission, council if it sees appropriate, would assign that and add it to the council, to the planning commission's work plan for evaluation of that. That kind of signals that initial interest in the project. From there, staff spends quite a bit of time and effort, along with legal counsel, negotiating the terms of that development agreement too, and, and ultimately, in my opinion, to deal that is worth consideration by the city. Of course, there are always opportunities for council reflection on that, and, and that's necessary and appropriate, that's great. But that doesn't come to planning commission until I, till I can with a straight face say this, I think, is a reasonable deal to consider for council or, and obviously planning commission. Then it goes to that public hearing by the planning commission, then the steps kind of take over as normal. The, the planning commission would forward those comment, any forward, would forward any comments and recommendations to council, and then council ultimately would take action, which could look like anything on that development agreement. So I, again, the bullet points there, just kind of detailing those extra steps in there, that it's not so simple as is laid out in code. There's quite a bit of, of work and negotiation that goes on in that, in that process. So that's the, that's the procedures for evalu, evaluating a development.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, since, since you're on there.
Yeah.
When, when you're going through the, when you're going through the development agreement, what is your guidance? Do you have input? Where is that? Because I was kind of looking to...
Yeah, a lot of that is, comes directly from that first kind of brown box there on the left where there's that preliminary discussion with council.
Right, but we used to have like trades, we used to say, these are typical trades that we take in a development agreement, you know, extra height for, for this, these are public benefits, these are...
I think what you're referencing in code, and Mr. Grumbach could maybe add to it if necessary, but I think what you're referencing is not necessarily within the DA realm, it's within, it's, it's, it's codified in, in your code where in order to get certain benefits under code, you have to provide these elements.
Right.
That's different than a planning, than a development agreement, where we have kind of a more, a more open slate to negotiate those public benefits.
Right. But do you have any guidance? Do you have any direction? Is there anything documented that kind of gives you...
I mean, documented...
Because if you leave it to people to just shotgun, you're going to get whatever you get, you know, every time.
Yeah, I, I think, so I think a good example recently, and I'd, I'd have to think through and, and point you to the specific documents where it's captured, but I think a good example we're talking about is like the West Point project where council had at length discussed affordable ownership opportunities, ownership opportunities, affordable commercial, I'm blanking on one of them right now, but had discussed those as priorities, whether it was in the housing action plan, the strategic plan, the different documents that the council adopted. We use those obviously as reference for what the council's desired projects look like. The comp plan is another good example. And then, as I mentioned in that first box, when we bring that to you guys, that's, that's also another opportunity for input on, is this, you know, project and some, and components of this project that is something that council desires or, or is there something different? So we take all that and that helps inform those negotiations.
Okay. So is, is the problem statement that you come up with a proposal and it comes into planning commission and it, it comes apart? It's starting all over again?
Yeah, I, I think my next slide or the second one after that, it really gets, I think captures that problem statement.
Okay.
To your verbiage. Okay, so give me just a second, councilmember, if you would. I'll, I'll get to that one. I think it's in the next coming couple of slides here. Related, so the, on WMC 2185.040, these are decision criteria for council to consider when evaluating development agreements. Again, copied directly from code. You've got some very specific items, subsections one and two there are, I would argue are directly related to land use matters. It's consistent with the city's comprehensive plan. Of course, that, the intent of that whole plan is to direct future land use in the community. And number two is consistent with development regulations. I, yeah, I think obviously directly related to land use. And then I think you, it's more, it could be more vague than that when you get to three, four, and five. It promotes the general, general welfare by balancing the public and private interest. Number four, provides such public benefits as agreed to between the applicant and the city. In this case, obviously, that's referring to city council. This is the decision criteria for council. And five, I think is probably the most vague and open to interpretation, is in the city's best interest. So those are the criteria from code. And I think, getting to your, starting to get to your, your question, councilmember Taylor, about the problem statement, is that PC role is really not defined clearly in code. So this is the only extent that we have the, the duties outlined. There's nothing in the, in the section about development agreements, as we saw there. The only provision of code that defines what the role of planning commissioners are generally, and this, of course, is not specific to development agreements, is outlined here from a different section of code, 2.12.040, broadly lays out those duties and responsibilities as review the recommendations related to Woodinville's comprehensive land use plan and review recommended approval of changes to the official zoning map and zoning code, and finally, any other thing, any other duties assigned by council. That's the catchall there. So that doesn't directly speak to what their duties and obligations are when reviewing a development agreement. I, I think that starts to get to the, the public or the problem statement, councilmember Taylor. And I think maybe this helps bring that home. Without that specific role defined for planning commission, other than to hold the required public hearing, that's the only provision that's specifically required of planning commission in your current code. There's a lack of direction on what that body should be deliberating. And I think some examples, kind of ranging on that spectrum, is, is it just land use related? Obviously, planning commission is created to help inform the council and advise the council on land use related stuff. So should they be looking at land use provisions in those DAs, which arguably historically have been the bulk of those development agreements? But I think, and I'll get to the third point here, that's changing as we've seen development agreements get more complex. On the other end of the spectrum, should they be looking at all the deal points, even non-land use related items such as financial terms? A good example there is the donation of property in the Harvest Development Agreement. Is that something that the council wants the planning commission to be weighing on? When it's not necessarily land use, that's, you know, I think, I would argue probably a, a more of a general interest for the council type item to consider. I mentioned it, DAs have grown more complex over the last 10 years. I think we have some good examples, whether it's the, the one that I gave there with the land donation from the Harvest for a parking lot. I know in the West Point one, one of the items we were talking about was potential option for the city to acquire some space for economic development purposes. So are those land use questions, I, I'm not answering, those are, those are questions for, for council, obviously, to deliberate on. And I think that gets right to that problem statement, is that lack of direction leads to a very extensive and often prolonged conversations and deliberations without that guidance of what they should be focused on. And I think that's where council needs to provide some, some guidance on that. The, one of the issues that creates is that we spent too long with such a wide range of, of conversations to be had. It extends in review, extends the review and consideration process. I know in the past, the council, and we're still undergoing it, has placed an emphasis on the need to bring predictability to the permitting process. This is a potential barrier to that. And in extreme cases, we have a recent example, obviously, that delay destroys the viability of the project. So that gets back to that permitting operational analysis that we're still working through of how do we bring predictability to that permitting process? This is kind of a big, hard to nail down piece of that timeline, potentially. All right, so options, and these just real quickly summarize what I've provided in your packets. Again, full spectrum from very, I think, minor to providing verbal direction to planning commission about the scope and review for comments. You know, one example being your focus, planning commission is on land use pieces. There's going to be other, there may be other pieces that, you know, need to kind of remain in purview of council. Kind of moving up that spectrum a little bit, we can amend the code to provide that above direction. In conjunction with one or, option one or two there, one possible path forward would be to amend code to provide a set timeline on the planning commission deliberations. Example that I think I included in your packet is throw out a number 60 days there. Seems like an opportunity to have at least three meetings if that starts when you first open the public hearing. So you have first and then two months worth of meetings, regular meetings. I think that helps get to the predictability timeline, a question that I know council's had an issue with in the past. Kind of continue to move up that spectrum, continue having the planning commission provide feedback, but move that required hearing to the council level. You are required by state law to have a public hearing on any of these development agreements. Right now, that responsibility, responsibility has been delegated to planning commission. That is solely a code decision by council. And then fourth, kind of the high end of that spectrum would be to remove that planning commission entirely from that process and conduct the hearing at council level. I'm not advocating for any one of these, I'm laying out options here for, for spurring conversation. And I think that is the last of that. So short presentation, but information for spurring discussion.
Questions, comments? I'll kick us off. So I, I asked for this to be a discussion. Last, last month, we had discussion for the, the Main Street proposal over in Old Town. And staff put a lot of time in this, city manager put a lot of time in that. There was a lot of discussion and in, in my opinion, that's the best, that was the best deal that I've seen since I've been on city council. We got, we got homeownership opportunities, we got affordable housing opportunities, we got full school impact fees for North Shore School District where the existing DA capped it. We had traffic mitigation from 1,600 average day, average daily trips that intersection by a cut shop to a net of zero. That's a big deal in that area. That area is a problematic intersection. We got affordable commercial. We also, I mentioned the impact fees in North Shore. We also, I mentioned the impact fees in North Shore, but delay, delays in my experience, and we've experienced it here, kills deals. And this was, this was the best deal for our, the residents we serve that we, we could have expected. And the delay at, on council and then delay at, at planning killed this deal. And that's really an unfortunate event for Woodinville. So I've served on planning commission, I think 60 days to look at land use. And I would encourage us to restrict it to land use. Last, the last meeting before Main Street pulled out, there was a conversation veering off into economic development. That's not land use and I don't, I don't believe that's the purview of, of planning commission. So I would, I would support a 60-day limit. And also, I had offered a 30-day extension to that 60 days per our city manager. If, if things got more complex or, you know, there was meetings that didn't occur or go as planned, so the city manager would be able to extend it by 50% to 90 days. I, I served on planning, 90 days to discuss that, or 60 days is, is usually sufficient, but there could be cases where an additional 30 days would be required. So I'd recommend that. I, I, I think that some of the stuff that we are getting is more complex. We've got different regulations given to us by the state in the form of GMA and affordable housing and, and, and stuff is getting more complex. And our residents deserve an efficient government is actually making solutions to problems, not, not intentional delays to really good deals that result in, in, in the loss of, of great developments. And we saw that with the Mulback's project. We saw it with this most recent project over, over in the Main Street one. So that's, way on that. Council member Taylor.
Yeah, I, I see this as kind of twofold. One, what are the values of the planning commission? And what, what are their interests? And not to bring that up late in the game, to get that in some kind of a training or guidance or material that comes through the, you know, that we agree to, that this is important for us. And to you, when you're doing the negotiation, so that you know what it is that we're, we're looking at, what's critical to our development agreement, what, what, what should we be looking at? Key points, you know, the affordability, the, you know, if, if that, that's it, if it's, we, we should define what it is and that should be in your hands, so it's not torn apart after you've made a tentative agreement. And now it's being presented to a planning commission of mostly green. I, I have to say, most of the, the people there haven't been in position for a year, right? There's a lot of new people, so they're still learning the job. And I think this thing kind of unravels when you have people thinking they're, they're the project manager and they're kind of able to do things. So it's, it's training on both sides. What, what's the value from the planning commission documented in some format, but also training from staff as to the process, from council as well? What's important for us? And 60 days, if that's, if that's the way to do it, then I'm all for making it predictable so that any applicant would be able to know that it's a 60-day process and this is what they're going to go through and not have it open-ended and delayed and kicked off for a future meeting and priority downplayed. So, yeah, I, I think those are all good ideas. But I'm not, I guess, I'm not in favor of three and four because we have enough work here and I don't want to become the planning commission at, at the council. I, I think that can also have its, you know, can unravel and, and turn into too much. So I, I think it's, the, the group that we have designated for planning commission, a little bit of training on what, what planning commission responsibilities are, and then what are the values that we're going to communicate to you for trades? And I, I thought I had something from a long time ago where there was the type one and type two, and there were different areas of focus, you know, what's important. And I, I don't see it on the current code, so I was looking for it.
Council member Evans.
Thank you. Can you speak a little bit to what kind of training, especially our newer people got? But, you know, are they, are they being given the strategic plans that we approve? Are you talking about that? Because I, I watch most of them, but I haven't seen every single one.
I'd, I'd have to defer to Mr. Grumbach and, because he and his staff kind of do the orientation for their commissions, just like we do for our public spaces on their specific stuff. So I'm, I'll let him speak to what specific materials he shares. Obviously, we go through the required, not germane to this one, but the OPMA and all that kind of stuff that they go through. I think it, and I'll let him speak to that. I think it does raise the point that we heard earlier about whether, what our expectations of the planning commission, any of our commissions are, right? And we've talked many times over the years about, you know, the, the way that I talk about it is kind of the different lenses that we're all responsible for, right? I have a different set of lenses that I'm responsible looking through than council does, right? Council is kind of that overall big picture stuff. I don't think it is reasonable or fair to your planning commissioners to, to expect that same of them. That's not what they've volunteered for, right? They're, they volunteered because they have an interest in land use. And that's a big, to council member Taylor's point, that's a big bite by itself is understanding land use. Asking them to, to do that and weigh all the trade-offs of tax policy or financial benefits for all these other public benefits, as we've got more and more complex in negotiating these, I don't think is fair to them. So I think that's the, needs to be part of the conversation, right? What is, what is your expectation as a council for planning commission to review? And, and with an eye of not overwhelming them and asking them to do too much, when they're really, that is ultimately council's purview to look at the, the big picture on everything.
Yeah, I mean, I know how much time we all put in, at least 20 hours a week, I would say, of reading and talking to people and just all that kind of stuff. And that is definitely not the level that we would expect for these really important positions. I really support one and two. I think that we should definitely amend our code to provide the direction that planning commission is, the scope is really land use. And we value their incredible attention to detail and diving into the code and really, really holding the rails there. And then I also believe that we should have that 60 days. Let's time box this so that it just can't get, keep getting kicked down the can, or the can, kicked down the road, sorry, it's been a long day. Because that is going to lead to killing things. And, and, you know, while I know many of us would be happy to talk to any commissioner who has questions about that, if they're specifically about the land use and that's really the value that's, that's provided back to council, let's, let's time box it and let's also subject box it so that they stay focused on their main mission and don't start veering off into things like economic development and whatnot.
Council member Art.
Thank you. I'm going to just echo the comments of my fellow council members. I do think that there needs to be both an amendment to limit discussions to 60 days, creating that predictable schedule for anyone who is applying for a development agreement is important. It helps them know what to expect from the city and it helps us to, to work on our planning and our workload throughout the year as well, that we know that this isn't going to be something that drags on for eternity. I know you as staff and we as council are already investing time in these things before they go to the public hearing of, of planning commission. So it's not like they're taking everything fresh. We've already provided some guidance. Staff has worked really hard on these things. So I think a 60-day window to look at that is reasonable and it is beneficial to the city and to developers both. And I think, I personally, I started on the Public Spaces Commission, which does not do land use. We do other things. So my expertise in land use coming to council wasn't vast. I have relied on the expertise of our planning commissioners who spend a lot more time digging into all of the minutia of parking regulations and square footage and all of these things. And this is where they're, they provide incredible value to our city. And that is important. And so I think diluting that with other considerations is unhelpful for them as volunteers because they are there to volunteer their expertise in a particular area. It also, I think, puts political pressure on them to go one way or another, instead of looking at the details of our code and our city's land use, which has already been approved. That is what we want them focusing on. We want them to say that this is or isn't consistent with our comprehensive plan. This is or isn't consistent with these other plans that we have approved and put in place. And that is where we rely on them so that when we know as the council, when a, when a planning commission recommendation comes before us, that it has been a true, genuine, deep look at all of these details that we cannot spend that time on at the dais up here. So I think providing a little bit of training and a little bit of guide rails for the commission and that 60-day window is important.
Council member Beth Scamler.
So the DA that everybody is talking about is well under the 60-day limit. In fact, they started negotiating that development agreement while we were still talking on the dais here, whether we were going to pass the land use. So the 60 days is irrelevant to the deal that died here. The problem I have is, we have a planning commission, they're also residents. So yes, we're asking them to talk land use, but they also get to talk about this is their city and what they view as, well, maybe this is or isn't a good deal. What is a good deal to us on the dais, what's a good deal to staff, may not be a good deal to the public. And there's been a great number of people who have come to planning commission public hearings and made their voice heard. In some cases, people feel more comfortable going to the planning commission than coming in front of us. We can be an intimidating bunch, we're elected. These are people who volunteer their time, so the public feels slightly more comfortable going to see them. I think imposing artificial timeframes is problematic because not all DAs are the same. Some are far more complicated than others. We had, what, 45 days on this development agreement over in Old Town? It collapsed because, not of time, but because, what, there was too much scrutiny? Who knows? We could handicap it all day. I think that more information coming from the people who live here and choose to represent free of charge and give their time gratis, I think the least we could do is listen to everything they have to say. And if we find that it's excessive, the time that they're taking, then maybe we should step in. But I don't think we need to create something artificial. It's incredibly upsetting to me that we're talking about community engagement and we have had an incredible amount of community engagement at the planning commission level. And now we're saying, but we're going to slap them on the wrists and say, how dare you consider your personal perspective when talking about land use? If what we're asking them for is a binary answer, we have computers that can do that, then why do we have a planning commission at all? We want planning commissioners because they can think nuanced, they can discuss and talk about what it is that they want, how it fits with their vision. And I can't think of better community engagement than using the planning commission and the expertise that they have. They think a lot about this stuff. They have a different perspective and I think that we are better for the extra engagement that they have. So I think that anything up there, if we, the only thing I could even remotely support is if council feels that we are, that the planning commission is excessively wasting time, we could step in. Otherwise, I say we give them their head, give them free rein, let them talk, let them be creative. We talk a big line, let's let them do too. They are residents, they're intelligent people who do this for free and they spend far longer at their meetings than we spend at ours. So I'm not in favor of any of this, I just think it limits them far too much.
Council member Edwards.
I am in favor of one and two with the extension possibility of 30 days. I think the key word in here is 60 days from the date of opening hearing. So that doesn't start until they open that hearing. So they already have that first meeting on day one talking about it. So if you did have a 90-day period potentially, if there needed to be an extension there, that builds in for four to five meetings potentially, where I think that also goes to the city too. The city, knowing that there's going to be a deadline, will be responsible to making sure we get the information that they need and make sure we get things scheduled in a timely manner. But I think this does create predictability while also allowing them to still have the time to get the job done. I think by giving 60 days plus that 30 additional if needed, I think that would allow them to do the job in terms of be able to have those discussion, raise the questions they need, while still be able to do it in a predictable, timely manner.
Deputy member Reynolds.
Yeah, I want to pick up something that council member Art kind of started in on. And I, I, I think I can kind of summarize it as the, the planning commission should not be politicized because we put them in a political position to make decisions, to do, to handle some political firestorms. And I will say that I think sometimes at, at council, we punt it and go, hey, go figure this out, planning commission, and I want to get out of that habit. And I think actually giving instructions along the lines of one and two would be helpful for that. I do think the time boxing is very helpful in pointing out that, hey, there's a time limit to this. Please exercise the time that you have, be focused in what you're doing. But back to the idea about planning commission being politicized, pulling that out also means that things that would normally go within a DA, some of those things need to be pulled out. And once again, that, that whole thing about assuming that the planning commission is a proxy for the general public, that is also one of the reasons we want to do more in, in terms of public engagement. To try and move away from that, they are not elected officials. They are chosen to, to actually be part of that decision by the council to dig in deep as a proxy who can decide land use. And I think that they should focus within that area and not get caught up in some of the distractions that can take place. So I, I believe that they're effective when it comes down to actually aligning land use and go, hey, we looked at this, this is what aligns with code and this is a smart decision for what we're actually trying to put together. But when it comes to some of those hot button issues that can be politicized, I believe that's the reason I was elected. Those are things that should come to us to actually take that firestorm off of that team. I'm not upset at them for, for not meeting the goals and, and having some things that they wanted to be in the Main Street property development. That's normal. But one of the things that I, I'll say again, we should probably move some of those things and go, this is not your duty. Please speak with your council member. And once again, that puts us up to do more public engagement and direct connectivity with a planning commission that we might see once a year in that joint meeting like we had this year.
Council member Taylor.
Yeah, I, I agree. I, I think we need to have the questions kind of corralled. The questions that you're really asking, planning needs to be very clear. I, I see, I've, I've seen the planning commission over the years start looking at objects and they start doing critical design review and they start looking at the glass and the siding and the angle of the roof and the pitch. And it's like, that, that isn't what we're looking for in a development agreement. So we need to be very clear that an artist rendition is not what we're there to review. It's, it's looking at the land use, looking at some of the policy, but we're, we're not to be doing a, a design review and critique of-
I, I think you raise a great point and, and it reminds me of item subsection two there, right? It's consistent with development regulations. It's why we have a professional staff to go through that stuff. To your point, does this meet the requirements for how much transparent, transparent space between three foot high and eight foot high? That, again, do you expect the planning commission to be getting into that level of code? I don't like looking at that level of code. That's their job. So that, you know, I do think that supports this, you know? What, where do you want planning commission to focus their time and efforts and not ask them to do everything?
And, and when you have the development agreement, you're not looking at detailed drawings, you're looking at concepts, right? It could be, but it doesn't necessarily equate to that's what you're going to get. So part of the training, I think, on planning is that you always have to look at it as, yeah, hey, this is a concept, it's an artist rendition, it's not what we're here to review. It could be anything. So you have to keep your policy wide enough in your review.
Any other discussion?
I, I would just, I want to emphasize that I, you know, it's been said here and I want to make sure planning commission fully understands that we value their input on land use and their volunteer time. And this is not, this is not a criticism of planning or criticizing- their volunteer time. And this is not, this is not a criticism of planning or criticizing their role in volunteering their time on land use, but every commission, no matter what it is, has a, it has a mandate. And if you could go back to the slide that... Planning Commission, those are, those are the mandates. That's, that's their duties per our code. So I think having that codified and an understanding, I think, would be beneficial to everybody involved, including staff, council, and, and planning. So I'd like to see us certainly follow the, the first two that was on the, the other, the other screen. So, and I think, you know, 60 days, 60 days is a long time to be discussing, you know, a one general topic, and giving the city manager some leeway to, if he wants to extend it to 30 days, another 30 days, that's 90, that's a quarter of a year. That's, that's, that's a quarter of our year. We need to, we, we have it in our, in our city mission, is that we want to have an efficient city government, and that's part of this. We, we need to diligently discuss, in this instance, land use, and then, and that's what we're gonna use planning for, to really pick that apart and then give us a recommendation, and then council will take that up from there. And I think having that 60 days with a 30-day option is what I would, and, and having the council, having planning stick to land use, because the city manager last planning meeting was, was debating with the Planning Commissioner on economic development. And a lot of fear and doubt and uncertainty was fed into that meeting intentionally in order to kill deals, and, and time kills deals, and that's, and that's just the case in all, all instances. So I'm in favor of the first two, and the one adding a 30-day extension if the city manager deems it necessary. Councilmember Beskemel.
Anyone who's bought a car knows the imposition of, we have to do this now, 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 or it's never gonna happen. I don't think that's a way to go forward in development. I've personally always felt that I wanna surround myself with people who are going to ask me hard questions, because it forces me to think more, not less. So what we're doing here is saying, look, we're giving you 60 days, and we're really limiting what you, what you have to tell us, because we really don't wanna hear it. And these developments that have, development agreements that have collapsed have not been the responsibility of Planning Commission, so developers themselves. Green Partners didn't even sign the first one. The second one, they didn't wanna hear that they would have to draw height renderings, so people, so that the Planning Commission could see what the land use looked like there. So, to create a problem where there wasn't one, and then to say, yeah, we're really gonna stifle what they're gonna say, because it's not their job, it really is because council doesn't wanna hear it. And you could limit it to 60 days, you could limit it to 30 days, they're still gonna have their opinions. And the public is still gonna have an opportunity to come in and talk about their opinions. This isn't about these opinions killing the deal. They should have these opinions, and they should feel free to come to us. And now that we're starting to stifle and limit what they can say, well, what's next? Are we gonna get rid of Planning Commission entirely, or are we just gonna tell Planning Commission, here's a rubber stamp, feel free to use it liberally? I think that we need more conversation, not less. We are in a complicated time with development agreements. Either we get rid of them, or we as a council go through and say, these are the specific parameters that we would like you to discuss. But to do this, it's muzzling them, it's insulting them. There are Planning Commissioners who have been on there longer than most of us have been in the city of Woodinville. And I think it is highly offensive to tell them that somehow their behavior is wrong for wanting what's best for Woodinville and bringing it to us. We're free to say no. And if 30 days is gonna kill a $100 million development deal, well then maybe it wasn't that great of a development deal at all. I think that this is ridiculous. I think this is anger over what the public has said they didn't want, and the Planning Commission heard it. Council didn't hear it, but Planning Commission did. This is punishment of Planning Commission for speaking their mind and hearing what the public has said. Misinformation is not the same thing as disagreeing with this council. It is not a crime to disagree with this council, and I welcome every Planning Commissioner who has a different perspective to come in here and address us, because they're certainly not gonna let you do it in a Planning Commission meeting.
Councilmember Evans.
So each commission has specific things that it's set up to do. They are not able to just be a, they're not able to just be running amok, doing whatever they want to do.
Point of order, this is the third time she's allowed to speak, and you're going to say it's allowed, but in historical meetings, you don't allow it. So let's hear the hypocrisy now.
You need to calm down, for one. Two, I have it, I have it, you have a, a habit of interrupting lots of council members and making nonsensical points of order. Your point of order is not well taken. I have councilmember Evans as her second term time talking.
And you can't count.
Okay, so each of our commissions is designed to do a simple thing, and that is the, the scope. We have our Public Spaces, they have their scope. We have our Planning Commission, they have their scope. Nobody is limiting their free speech, nobody is saying you can't have an opinion, nobody is saying you can't come and make public comments, email us, reach out and talk to any of us. What we are saying is, as a city, we need to function in a predictable, streamlined manner. And if that means that we time-box things, and if that means that we say we need to have a hearing and we need to have a decision within 60 days, even if the decision is, we are not agreed on a decision, at least as a council, we can continue to move forward and be very predictable to the people and the developers and the businesses within this community. It, it's not okay to politicize things for our volunteers. They're there to focus on a very specific mandate, to be very, very expert in land use. That takes a lot of time and effort to get to that level. And to then try to politicize and, and wedge things in there that don't belong in Planning Commission is not fair to them. And if they wanna have a bigger voice in setting the direction, then they should run for city council, because that's the role of city council. So I am fully in favor of this. I would like to know what our next steps are. Are, are you gonna come back with some...
That, that would be the next step, is we draft some language for a potential ordinance, for consideration for council.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have, at this point, do you feel like you have what you need?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. Any other last discussions? All right. That was, we're on public comments. Somebody sign up? Reports to city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, one item this evening, and I'll forward it to your emails, probably tomorrow at this point. But I, we, today from our state lobbyist, we're forwarded a letter from the Office of Financial Management for the state of Washington. This is fortunately not to us, but to all the directors of statewide elected officials, talking about their upcoming budget deficit, and this is directing those different officials to start considering budget reductions for the fiscal year 2025 and through 2027 by any, in an order of magnitude of $10 to $12 billion total is what they're looking at, cut from the state budget. Obviously, the big implication for us, and I just saw Asha's head snap around when she heard that, is our move ahead money was gonna be our, is, is going to be, I'm gonna recommend, our top legislative priority when you start looking at the legislative agenda next week at your meeting. That is gonna be, it's gonna have to be a big lift from all of us to get that pushed through the budget. When they're looking to cut $10 or $12 billion, and say, hey, but our $5 million needs to be in there when it's all said and done, that's gonna be the big trick next legislative session in Olympia, so be prepared for that. That's it. Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Reports to councilmembers. Councilmember Evans.
Thank you. On October 17th, we had an East Rail Regional Advisory Council meeting, which was great. I urge people to follow that and join virtually to be informed. A lot of really good things discussed, especially the Code of Conduct. We're, we're thinking about an agreed-upon Code of Conduct that goes across all of the jurisdictions, and so the discussion started there. We also got a status update on the 2025, 2026 Rack and East Rail Partners interlocal agreement, and so I'm guessing that some information will be coming forward at a near-future meeting about that. And there is a fundraiser this Thursday for East Rail Partners to really help fund the work that they do to get state, county, federal money, and lobbying back to our state for the East Rail project. So, thank you.
Councilmember Edwards.
Well, I guess today we wrapped up the Community Engagement Subcommittee, so I just wanna take the time to thank my fellow councilmembers who served on the committee. I think the discussions we were able to have during those meetings, and the disagreements we have, and working collaboratively through those disagreements, really led to us providing the best possible product we could as a team. So thank you for those conversations, the disagreement, and working collaboratively through them and effectively. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Randolph.
Here, here. 'Tis the season. Both the East Side Transportation Commission and Seashore are currently working on their legislative, their legislative focus for this year. So far, nothing controversial has come up, and I'm always for additional public transportation for Woodville, and so far, the effort's seemed to focus on making sure that that state is funded. Nothing else for this evening. Thanks.
Councilmember Beskemel.
I was in Northern Virginia, DC, this past weekend. My son had nationals, but as one is when you're in Alexandria, you are no more than a sneeze away from someone who works in the federal government. So I actually had some fairly interesting conversations with people who work in various departments of government, so Department of State, Homeland Security, talking about budgets and talking about reallocations of budgets that have already been voted on by Congress. The way it works is, not everyone knows this, I figured I'd just pass it along, when Congress passes a budget, and the money is transmitted to the Department of Treasury, there is no other branch of government that can take that money away. It's been voted on, the money's been transferred, i.e., our money, our federal money, cannot be taken away from us. The Department of Treasury is very tight with its money, as it should be. Bureaucracy exists to maintain order and maintain the flow and the vote of Congresses that have come before us. So, long story short, the money is there, how soon we get it remains to be seen, but there are checks and balances in place still that will require several acts of Congress and probably votes by two-thirds of the states to change. So for now, the money is safe just because of that bureaucracy. So for once, yay bureaucracy.
Councilmember Art.
Thank you. So a couple of updates on shelters. So severe weather shelters are set to be opened in case they are needed based on the weather conditions. So there will be one available in Shoreline, and there is one that is an, an existing shelter in Redmond that will offer additional capacity if weather conditions kind of hit a certain activation level. So we have severe weather shelters set for this winter, as temperatures start dropping overnight. We have places we can send people if they are outdoors, or even if they're, their heating is out in their home and they need somewhere to spend the night. There's also some funding available for transport, 'cause neither of those are that close to Woodinville. So if someone needs a ride, there are mechanisms for getting them to the shelter locations. Also, the new senior women's shelter, which is set to open in Kenmore, is already taking referrals. So if there are senior women who are unhoused, they can be added to that list. And the shelter is currently looking for volunteers to help repaint the walls and clean everything, so that they can open in a couple of weeks for those initial referrals.
Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, my safety tip for the season, I guess, with the time change, just make sure you're a little more visible when you're walking around parking lots. There's a lot of people, they haven't really changed their driving habits, and, and so, yeah, yeah. So just be watchful. People coming around out in the parking lot in the dark, and it's something we, we deal with this time of year. Also, with the wind blowing, we've got lots of leaves starting to, you know, all come down. I've noticed the, the city has done good work on cleaning up the roads. It looks like the roads don't have carpets of leaves like other cities around here. Good, that's good work, but also, if you see a drain that's clogged, you know, go out there and open it up a little bit, or do the, the tip, and you'd call for support to get that before we have a flood, and hopefully, we don't have any floods this year. That's it.
I just wanted to, it's a day late, but I wanted to give thanks to all of our veterans. Yesterday was Veterans Day. My dad was a Navy pilot, or I should say naval aviator, 'cause he would not have liked me to say Navy pilot. And so thanks to all the veterans out there a day late, that has served our country and are continuing to serve our country. So with that, I'm going to, we're gonna go to an executive session. I'll read the appropriate verbiage. "Council adjourned to a closed session for approximately 30 minutes to consider the acquisition of real estate when public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause a likelihood of increased price. RCW 42.30.1101B. No formal action expected to be taken." So we'll adjourn, and we'll be back at 10:35.
Mr. Mayor, I might suggest, since it's been three hours, give a little bit of recess there, and then we can... Thank you.
I think that's a good idea. Why don't we, why don't we meet in three minutes, and then we'll go to 10:38.